Put on your seatbelts.
Well, thanks for joining tonight. Appreciate the council spending so much time this evening. Let's start our meeting. Councilmember Barker. Welcome back. Hey, Mexico, Councilmember Barker. You could give us an indication, a thought, at least a bunch of allegations. I'll put the indication right on the top. Okay, we're grateful that we could gather this evening as a city council and staff. North Ogden, we can discuss this upcoming budget. We're grateful for the opportunity to have this discussion. Please bless it, the leading guidance that will make physically smart decisions and we'll be able to do what's best for North Ogden in this year and in the upcoming years going forward. Bless us that we can do the best that we can and they seem to see, image Jesus Christ, image.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Barker. Appreciate that. Before we start into our agenda, if anyone has any conflicts of interest, they will need to disclose this this evening. I don't see them. Move on to item number two on the agenda, which is a discussion that I should consider. April 26th, 2022, City Council meeting minutes. We don't have the full direction to the minutes. Looking at for action to approve the Council meetings of April 26th, 2022. By Councilmember Swanson, we have second session. Second, any further discussion on the minutes? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Who said?
Hi.
When you post. As you passage unanimously. And I like to write a number three with your public comments. John, I don't know if you have anyone online.
Would you have one person write?
I'd be the time if they'd like to make public comments. For anyone here. I don't see any, so we'll move into our agenda. The reason we're meeting tonight is to discuss and answer some main questions on the proposed 2023 budget for the city. We have passed the initial budget. But there's still some unanswered questions. I think it would be prudent to get a recent direction to our finance department on those. City preparing us for what may be truth and taxation hearing or kind of finalizing things upon the budget. I believe Councilmember Swanson, you sent out a list of council members or things you felt should be addressed. I know Councilmember Dowpas added a couple items. I think I threw in one or two. So why don't we start with you, Councilmember Swanson, this evening? If we can address your.
I think if we go right to the slides, it's really a recitation of the questions that I heard from other council members. So, okay, and I think John's done pretty well captured in the. Take it away, John.
So I just, I just wanted to do an intro and just say, Council, what Jamie needs, or I guess maybe what the city needs is, right now, we have a tentative budget. And if nothing changes between now and the anticipated truth and taxation hearing, that's what we would operate under. There are some of these items on the list that are not included in that tentative budget. And so if, if we want these type of things included or discussion about it, then we need to do what we would call an operational budget, which would get us through to August. So it's something we would adopt next week as the new tentative budget to get us through August. But the idea is for tonight is it'd be really helpful if on every bullet point, we get an answer on what the council's feeling, what your thoughts are. So that Jamie can incorporate it into the document for next week. And if it's something that just, we, there's, it's a no, then it's a, you know, we can move right on past it. But I don't, I hadn't planned on leading the discussion on each item. My goal is just to make sure that we get an answer to Jamie for each item. So that's my spiel.
Thanks, John.
So, Council, these are items that I've heard from each of you in one way or another, right? That we've talked about, that we just want to be clear on as we move forward. So let's start with the first one, 23rd police officer. Right now, that is not in the tentative budget. Is, I guess the question is, is everybody okay with that? Yeah, Jamie, go ahead.
I do have a correction, but is it tentative?
It is an tentative.
It is not in the current budget that was sent out last week in the email where we have taken it out.
Okay.
So as of the operating budget, as a maintain that it is in there.
So we were going to reevaluate once all of the sales tax and property tax are coming, whether we were going to add.
Right, we were looking at like December, I remember the discussion, right? Is that real bill with you?
Yep.
And Chief Tiffany trying to, in fact, if you want to come join us up there, that would be great. You don't, you don't have to hide that.
Yes, I don't think.
Councilmember Swanson. This is maybe, I think, the council's notice, but with the budget that Jamie sent out recently. Might want you where that, this is, wants to budget deficit.
Yes.
So we could start, then maybe perhaps track them based upon.
I agree. So for the, for what was sent out last week, because we did some switches and deletions and additions. At the tentative, we're at 308,000 dollar deficit. And since the discussions then, we're still at 305 deficit. So just to summarize, right now, our revenues are coming in at roughly about 9.7 million in revenues, but we have a $10 million expenditure budget. So we're trying to close that in. Since the tentative, we've added back in the unfunded depreciation, which was the 225. We've added some additional salary adjustments. We've taken out the 23rd officer, and we've also taken out the events coordinator, but replaced it with a part-time or a contracted position. So those are the differences between the tentative and what was sent out last week. But it's still equating to about a $305,000 deficit.
Now, when we pass the tentative budget, I think we had negative 73, and basically we balance that by saying we won't put as much into capital projects. But this is kind of the realistic of what we're facing unless we don't want the bill to capital.
Correct.
Questions, Council? Is that clear to everyone?
The question still without the receiving of. No, that's what I'm. When, that's, that's later. It is on the agenda.
That's a capital, capital question. We're trying to answer these questions first.
Okay.
And then we'll jump off that direction. Does that sound good?
That sounds good to me. We were just going like, there's 300,000.
Well.
So that was just my question. Oh, okay.
So does what Jamie said make sense? Things that have been added, things that have been taken away? Comments? No comments.
Is this a pretty? Worst-case scenario? I mean, generally, we tend to try to be extremely conservative in our estimates, right? So we're trying to be as like accurate to the point of maybe being overestimating on expenses. And maybe a little more conservative on our revenues, right? Which is why we've been like 20% like, so.
We are respectively, respectively. Conservative on our revenue. And appropriately conservative on our expenses overly, so, right? Because I think that's the best way to budget. Rather than assuming we're going to get more money than we might. And with the economy the way it is right now. Right? It is just, it's crazy.
So I'm just wondering, you know, to me, this is, these are variables.
True.
So I'm just wondering, is this historically kind of about the level of conservatism that the city has used?
Jamie, do you want it from that experience?
I think probably we were closer on expenditures than we've ever been in the past.
I agree.
Particularly with inflation, I think, hitting us. But I think the apartment head to kind of learn to be more accurate than that because of the fear of, I don't spend it, I don't get it. Type situation has occurred to them, you know, sometimes in the past. So I think they've done a really good job of trying to really hone in on their expenses. Now, there's, there's some things beyond the control. For instance, with Tiffany, as much as she would like to hire some seasonal people, she can't, she just can't find them, right? So she may end up, if she can't find people, under budget. Not that she wants to be, she'd love to find these people. I think in revenues, I would just remind you that build into this budget is a 7% increase in property taxes. Which is if we held the rate steady.
A steady rate, not increasing the rate at all.
That's, that's just building a 7% factor. Jamie told me today, and this isn't concrete, but she said our assessed valuation, the city came in at about $2 billion. Last year, I think it was 1.5 billion. Yeah. So if we held the rate steady, we'd, we'd have the windfall of approximately 33% increase in our property taxes, which is probably unbearable for most people. I'm not sure 7% is going to cut it depending on what we, you know, doing here tonight. But I would say with Councilmember Swanson's comment, revenues are probably as uncertain as they have been in the last couple of years. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, but build into the sales tax number is what we collected this year. Which is a substantial increase over budget, I think, by 500,000 or 600,000 dollars. But everything you read says that people are really cutting back on major purchases because of food, gas. So sales tax could be kind of one of my interests.
Question about sales tax and how it's distributed to our city. Is it mostly from what's generated from North Ogden? Or is it mostly what's generated elsewhere and we get?
Last time I looked, it was, I think, about 33% from what's spent in our city and 67% from the state allocation.
Okay.
And another factor in that, Mayor, you're aware of this, from this last legislative, couple of legislative sessions at the state. There's been discussion about changing that statewide allocation, which may not necessarily be good for smaller communities like ours. It would result in us getting less of that statewide allocation, which would be a reduction in sales tax.
But there's nothing, they've talked about it, there's nothing that's.
They've talked about it, which is, for me, is with our legislature watching them over the last decade, when they start talking about something, it's not long after that something is run through. Right? When they, when they start having, when you start seeing the public discussions, then you can feel pretty confident that there's a bill filed somewhere or there's somebody preparing a bill file that would go along those lines. Now, whether or not it passes is always, but to answer your question on the, the 7% increase that Mayor talked about is not maintaining the rate. That is, we, we had some early discussion, talking about having a, accepting a rate that is higher than what the county will come with. The certified tax rate, but lower than maintaining the rate.
Okay, so still reducing it.
Certified county would be here, maintaining would be here. And we were talking about a rate somewhere in here that would be about 7%. In some of our other discussions, we talked about maintaining. Our guess, our assumption was that property value taxable valuations would go up 20, 21, 22%. And that's where that, you've heard that number, right? So that 7% would be here, the county rate is here. If we maintain the rate, we might be here at the 20%, 21%, 22%. Well, what we have found, and I did a little homework for each of you.
Oh, you got each of our houses?
This is each of your home. And what your taxable valuation rate went up. So if we maintain the rate, this is the percentage by which you're North Ogden, not all the others. But remember that everybody's tax rate is based on your home valuation. So Lieber County, they're talking about an increase, right? Everybody, the Northview Fire is talking about an increase. So if everybody, if everybody just maintained the rate and didn't accept the county, the county certified rate, this is where your increase would be. Man, yours would be 36%. Your taxable valuation. Mine is a lovely 43%. Ryan, yours is a wonderful 16%.
100. I didn't pay North Ogden City taxes last year.
Right. Valuation.
The value.
Young lady, yours went up 26%.
Okay.
What? Yours went up 43%. And Jamie, yours went up 28%. So in combined, all of this, it's, it's a 33% increase.
So that's.
So when Mayor talks about, so as we talk about these things, we're talking about maintaining the rate. Maintaining the rate is a much larger impact than what we had imagined. So we have to be cognizant of that as we talk about what we're going to do as far as a tax rate goes. What are we going to accept? As Mayor said, you know, a 33% increase citywide is huge. And I mean, it's, it's really good. And has a large impact on a number of people, yes.
That's a good question, man. I'm just picturing them when I'm on my tax statement and the 16 line items on it. And if 15 of those line items do the 33% and whatever that, except for the, the city I live in. Instead of 33%, because the city chose not to follow the other 15 entities on my tax statement, instead of 33%, it might be 31. That's the impact of North Ogden and not following the other three is, is a mere 1%. I'm just picturing this in my mind.
Yeah.
It's just a question.
Yeah, if, if all the other entities maintained the rate, didn't raise it or lower, then it would be a 33% increase. If North Ogden said, we'll take the county rate, it would have a pretty small impact on you. Because you figure schools.
Yeah.
Is the biggest piece that you have. So if they maintain their rate and your home valuation goes up 33%, well, school, you're going to get 33% more out of you.
Do we know what those other 15 entities are doing?
We don't know all of them.
We know so, Chief. The county's approved a 4.2% increase. Sewer district is near 20%. I think the fire ward can maintain probably around now, here 33, no, more. But let's just say 20% there. The school district is the big, but that's 49% of at least my tax.
Yeah.
But I was, the superintendent said they never increased taxes, so I don't know if we'll see any increase there.
So they, they will probably do a pretty substantial increase because of all the building and all the increase in wages. Teachers, I imagine, they'll probably go 20%.
Well, that's not the teachers. Because the teachers are paid by the state. The district is, is really the infrastructure. So that's like all of your buildings and then all of your staff.
Operation.
Those operations. So those, those people might get an increase too. But I wish they would suck up in Taj Mahal-ish kind of schools, my girl. I know, I can do that, my one. Yes.
The worst would be totally sidetracked because I keep reading this stuff, right? Let's go back to our list. Okay?
So do you want to talk about anything personnel or are we going line by line?
Let's, let's go line by line, unless you feel like it's better through a different way.
Awesome.
So we, 23rd officer. You said in the tentative, but out of the most recent, correct? What you had mentioned that we had looked at, we'll relook, revisit things in December, you should see where we are. Kind of like we did this last year with the 22nd officer.
That worked previously.
Yeah.
Councilman Swanson, we made a commitment that if said it, because it's been sales tax, so. Yeah, it's a certain level that we will do that, so we can make that decision.
Yeah. Do you want to plug a number into that? I don't have a number that I could plug in, a percentage.
What is, what's the estimated cost of the 3rd officer?
At 125?
It's.
Hi, Ryan.
About 125 for the half year.
For the half year?
Yeah.
Because the vehicles.
Vehicle and equipment.
Right.
Plus a half year's salary.
Right. So I'm wondering if we should say if property tax exceeds the budget by 125,000. Or some number there, because I think.
No, I think that's.
That way the chief doesn't have to be.
Just counsel, how you feel about that?
And potentially before December, right? You're saying once he hits that threshold, go ahead, right?
Well, I think it's built in at December of 125, if you want to do whatever that is. If we hit the property tax threshold, then that'll generate the, yeah, so.
So it would be like a dual trigger?
Really, it takes us time to fill a position. So it wouldn't be, it would be like.
Comedian.
Yeah. It would be if we could set the timeline for January 1st. If the evaluation is not at the lever, that easily January 1st would be a perfect timeline for us.
Council, hear this?
On January, January 20th, we would know what happened in November for sales tax.
Okay. We'd have a pretty good idea, and who knows, depending on.
Two months wide on sales tax, Jamie, honey, look.
Yeah. No, I, I was doing attorney math with dates in my head.
And so they have Novembers, but not Decembers, which is the bulk, right?
Well, we won't have Decembers until February. But we'll, we'll know by this, by November. I mean, if, if, I, in my feeble mind, I can't imagine how it would happen. But if sales tax continues to be the unpredictable to the super positive that we've had the last few years. Then it would be Octoberish, then we would be looking at being at close to 125. Is that the number we want to set?
I think the chief said that's what it would cost. And even if we hit it in October, that would authorize him to begin the search. And he still may want to do January.
A January start date, but to start searching.
But as soon as that number hits 125, that will authorize him to be additional officer.
And that is entirely based on property tax.
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Well, property tax will be like the first hurdle, so it's like.
Property tax is all earmarked, 100%.
That's all going to.
To public safety. That's all public safety.
I thought that's what.
It's the old, I think he inadvertently said that.
Okay, it's.
Yeah, it's the sales tax.
Sales tax.
I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Okay. Anything else on that officer? That's coordinator.
On your.
So the, where we stand, absolutely. Where we stand now is that is out of the most recent budget, correct? But a part-time slash contract position back in at 25,000, is that correct? Okay. Mr. Tiffany. Without throwing anything at me.
I know, don't throw anything. I have a terrible aim.
It's chocolate, and it'll.
I always play defense. So we're the events coordinator. Before Nick left us for a different position, we had an employee working 40 hours a week to accomplish the events and activities that we listed out, you know, in the slide shows and presentations we've given. If we do not have a full-time employee and there's on-track work and a lesser valuation. I would like feedback on what activities and events you would like to seek away. Because I don't feel like you can hire a part-time person to do a full-time person's job. And there are a long list of events and activities that we are currently doing. I would love, this is personal, I would love a decision on this because right now I'm carrying the weight of this position and have been for the last three months. And it's exhausting. You know, that saying, you're doing a good job, and they give you somebody else's job. I would love to be able to be the Parks and Rec Director again, not have hands all over here. So I'm waiting for direction on if this position is not full-time, what are your priorities as far as events and activities for the city?
If council decided not to do the full-time, would you be able to provide us with a list of the activities so we could go through those and say?
What are we cutting out?
What are we cutting out?
Can you give us like an estimate of how many hours that they require? So like, okay, this is. Yeah, that one's a little bit rougher because we don't, it's not like anybody sits down and works 40 hours a week for a certain event. So it may be that when there's time for this activity, somebody's working on it for a couple hours here. So it would probably take a good year to honestly analyze how much time you're spending on each one. We do a lot of things in the events department much farther ahead of schedule than you'd anticipate. So you've seen the activity guide that's out here, you know, six pages. Nick actually had all of those activities and events set up. The musicians for Music Mondays, they were booked. And so before he left, I was able to compile all of that and print it for you. But now it's just who is going to be there operating all of those. And so what's not getting done right now is planning for the fall and winter events and activities that we usually have. So Fright Night, the Glow Run, the North Pole, the tree lighting ceremony, those kinds of things aren't being planned for right now. Because we're just trying to operate what that position would usually do at this time.
Hey, Tiffany?
Yes.
Question, under Councilmember Ekstrom's proclamation of try something and see if it works. What's the downside of trying a contract or part-time? See if it does work. I know that's probably something you're wondering if it would work, but what's, what's the downside of trying it to see if it works?
I think the only downside to trying it would be that if it's not successful, you'll see a decrease in level of service for your residents.
So a decrease versus elimination. But I know Councilmember Ekstrom was always proposed, you know, she's willing to try and see if it works. I'm just wondering what the downside is.
And what I'm also wondering about is if we do a contractor, can they, you know, can we piece it out? It's like, okay, this is, you know, so they aren't necessarily city employees, but they're a contractor to, to run the event. So, you know, it's just kind of a difference in, you know, a fully loaded employee costs less than just paying the contractor. So, you know, if we get somebody that doesn't really care about oral and K or, you know, the, and all of the health insurance. And it's not the benefits of the city, but they're willing to do it for a fee, you know, a fee-based contractor, would that work? And if we get somebody that's open to doing, you know, it's like, I'll do this and, you know, and I'll see how it goes, see if that, is that willing? Is that something we're willing to kind of give to them?
A whirl?
Do you, and this is just up for discussion, do you feel like there's a contractor out there who is able to do what this full-time position has been doing on a part-time basis? Or who would charge less than what a full-time employee costs?
Well, here's, here's an interesting thing. Trying to research this. All cities, I should say, well, numerous cities. All cities, I should say, most numerous cities don't have this, but the reason they don't. Is because their citizens and their council take on the responsibility, get volunteers. Uh, volunteers are pretty unremovable, frankly. Although I think they pulled off a pretty good event last year, but they were motivated to do so for a different reason, but. You know, Brigham City, for instance, they have a Chamber of Commerce that takes on a lot of their events. Pleasant view, I think each other council members takes an abandoned, is responsible for the volunteers and pulling it, pulling it off. You know, I, I don't want to be negative, but we haven't had a lot of. Success with volunteers in our community, unfortunately. So, what's happened is these events have become city events instead of community events, and that, that puts the burden on the public aviation. To do that, but. You know, a lot of cities got their work done because of volunteerism, but we haven't had. Well, success, but I'm just wondering, you know.
Well, I, I think in, with what you just said, Mayor. In a way, the residents are speaking. When they say, we want these events, but we're not willing to volunteer for them. To me, that says, that, well, the only way that happens is if you pay for it.
And, and you know, I've been fairly vocal about this, and I'm sorry to be vocal about it, but. There are some events, I think the citizens have said they don't want, and we're still doing.
Which ones would those be?
Well, for instance, and, and I'm not picking on Tiffany, but, you know, I said a year ago, if we can't increase. Attendance of music in the park, Mondays in the park, to get, you know, I think we set a goal of at least two hundred and fifty. You know, we haven't gotten near that. And so, do we continue to do events that are being supported by the community? You know, we have some great events. You know, the winter, the Halloween, Cherry Days. But maybe we need to sit back and say, you know, what events are we doing that the citizens aren't supporting?
Well, my, my only thing about that is, everything starts out really small, if you look at the Ogden Farmer's Market. It started with a few booths, and now it is an incredible huge event. So, I mean, it's, I think anything like this is going to take time, so.
How long? Because how long have we been doing music in the park?
How long were you?
Pandemic, right, too, so that's kind of.
But it hasn't, it hasn't quite happened outside of support.
What's that?
Because people wouldn't come, I mean, they just went to a twenty-twenty, even twenty-twenty-one.
Well, well, I, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be possible that it could grow over time. I mean, I mean, last year and the year before, because the pandemic, I think is a horrible year to base it off of.
Well, I don't think we're basing it off, I mean, when we had David, Art, Ozma come, they did an excellent job, in my opinion, of advertising for that.
It was during COVID.
But I'll tell you, we won't get different results doing the same thing. And we had a commitment that we would change how we were doing it to try to energize it. But due to the lack of, you know. Events coordinator, for instance, we're doing the best we can do, with that we assess that. But basically, we, we've got planned pretty much the same.
I, I think we have to be, and, and just general discussion, I think we have to be careful, though. Of starting down the path in the city that we're going to eliminate things that a majority of citizens don't participate in. If that's the case, then to get rid of all of our parks, because a very small percentage of our population actually uses any of our parks ever. And so if we start, I, I'm just saying as a general principle, that if we. If we judge something based on how much of, of the residents actually use it, and that becomes our. Our litmus test of whether or not we keep it, well, then the parks, we might as well sell them for homes, because. I mean, the, the park behind my home, unless it's a soccer team, it doesn't get used by. But a very small sliver, any of the parks, a very small sliver of our general population, so I think we have to be careful about. That being a reason to eliminate something.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a niche. Draw, right? Just like any of our parks are, any, anything that we're going to do, we're, we're trying to find a thing for everybody, essentially. So, like, you know, our parks are used by a very specific demographic, right? And then they outgrow it, you know, if you want to look at like the, the park that's used the most is North Shore, right? That is, that's packed, you know, that's, we've got the most, the majority, because that's sort of all of them, and we still have people complaining about. You know, so it's like, we can't kind of look and see, I know the people that do come. Do music, really enjoy it, you know, and so it's like, do we go, like, are we just going off pure numbers, or. Level of enjoyment of those that do.
Well, I think that's part of the conversation, yeah, part of the. Process. Is we have to, we have to find that way to determine the value of it, and, and is the city getting, right?
I was looking at the Sandy City budget, and as you know, they have an amphitheater. And they set goals to say, okay, here's how many tickets we're going to sell, here's how many people can have attendance, and they measure against that. Because there's two things I just looked for out, one is we need to be doing what the citizens want, not what the city wants, this is. This is a community. And the second thing is we ought to have objectives to measure against, what's our goal? In, in doing that, and I'm not objecting to Councilmember Dow has this thing, but how do we measure that, that progress?
I mean, the first thing we have to do is complete the facility that we're measuring in.
Uh, Phil, that facility is never going to be completed to.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, I mean, that's, we don't have lights, you know, we don't have sound, you know, it.
So, if we, and, you know, I know people are surprised, I think I was the one that suggested that we go for a grant, right?
A bond?
Uh, no, grant, uh, a grant, because our attitude is that they're not going to give us any more money for that, they told us to back off. I said, you know, let's go for a grant for lights and, and sound. So, what is our end result of doing that? Because I agree, it has to be to a level of use that's acceptable. For what we want, but what is what we, we want by, by doing that? What is our, our goal to, is it to have some additional plays, is it to get more music, I mean, what? I know Tiffany's very concerned about. Coming up with seventy-five thousand dollars, because that's the condition, right? The condition is that city will match with, uh, citizens, because we've heard how. How citizens are so supportive of that, well, I'm like, okay, put your money where your mouth is. And come up with seventy-five thousand dollars, we'll come up with seventy-five, and we went for a grant of a hundred and fifty. So, I hope people know I'm not against doing that, it's just, what's our outcomes? Because as we talked about budgeting, we want to be connected to outcomes, right? So, by doing that, what's our goal? And back to Tiffany's thing here of events coordinator, maybe what she's saying is, well, it won't change anything if we don't have somebody to play.
Well, and the other thing is, if we're, if we're going to be investing some more money into the amphitheater soon. To me, it sounds crazy to eliminate the music in the parks, because that's the place that we're. Going to be investing some more money to get the sound and the equipment up to snuff. And then, hey, you know, so, because what, what Tiffany started out with was saying. What would we want, what would we consider to take away if we went to part-time? And so it just seems like, if you're prioritizing what we keep and what we don't, in the event of going to part-time. That's, that's where it would be kind of weird to me to back off of music in the parks.
I'm using that as an example, because the discussion was, he's going to bring back, and I'm saying. You know, that's, that's how we need to look at things, is what do the citizens want? If, if this council makes a decision that they're going to contract Tiffany's sound or part-time, and if you do that, here's what I got to eliminate. That's probably what she needs to come back with, but I'm just saying, how do we make that determination? But when, when it comes back, if she comes back and she says, okay, here's what you'd have to eliminate. You know, how are we going to prioritize it? Because I don't think we're out to eliminate things, we just want to do. You know, uh, there is a expected return, I think, for, for investments, and I know that's a. Business principle, but I think it's a principle that kind of is realistic in the world.
I see people coming out the most for our flights, you know, theater production, especially locally. We've got, we've got the neighbors in, you know, the kids in it, they've got, you know, adults in it, they, you know, that's my personal favorite, too. Like, I love to go over and see a play. And I, I wonder if, if we can get it to the point that I know there are a lot of sort of theater. Enthusiasts around, even, you know, Da Vinci Academy has really active theater groups, we were high does, you know, it's like, there, there's. I think if we can tap into those a little bit, we might be able to get a little, maybe a few more of those. The thing about those is they're, you know, they're a lot, worth to put on a lot more than, you know, a concert.
There you go, there's the source for seventy-five thousand bucks, right?
There you go, well, and, and when they charge admission for them, too, and people are willing to pay five, ten bucks for a ticket to those. You know, I'm going to come and see my grandkids, come be on the stage, you know, so. It's just an idea, it's a.
Counselman Swanson, what are your thoughts?
I'd like to listen to everybody, but my initial thought is, you know, we're, there's only two things we do, we're going to be able to make this work. Or the public safety building, we're going to need to increase revenue, we're going to increase expenses, so if we could do more plays. At the theater, that would increase our, if we would increase the cost per person coming into North Shore, for example. That would increase our revenue. So. I'm not sure if I meant a complete answer, but that's where I'm at. But we, we really need, I mean, we have the, we have the amphitheater, somehow, we need to get that paying for itself. So, whether we see if we can't get additional plays being done there during the summer, or.
We're considering for ourselves what costs need to be covered. What's that, what, what ongoing annual costs need to be covered?
Well, just like the, well, when I talk about, uh, talk about costs, I'm just talking about, you know, making sure that we do have the lights and the, and the, right? Okay. The, what is it, micro system?
Counselman Barker, what are your thoughts?
On which part? We talked a lot.
Well, the, the, the general, we're on events coordinator, so, and, and all that that encompasses, right?
I'm, I may have a different opinion. Because I know we've been talking with a contractor that would like this position. And she did a great job last year in a short amount of time for Cherry Days. And so, when I, when she says she can do this job part-time and make it functional, I believe her, until she proves otherwise. If we give her all the resources that, and support her, I believe that we won't see a drop-off. But I know who she is. The, what the mayor said about, well, and the grant match, a couple of years ago, we had citizens come in asking for pickleball courts, and we said, raise some money and we'll build them.
Chirping crickets?
We have not seen those families come back, and we're, we had a pickleball tournament over the weekend, and we heard from a lot of viewers, why does that North Dog and build pickleball courts? When they build them in front of you, the citizens raised over a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, they do them. If you really want something in your community, show us. But if we say we want to raise money, and from the get-go, the amphitheater, they said, we will, we want this. We will have private donations, we want, let's see these donations and show us.
Well, I, I mean. We, we could get into quite the argument here on this, with, with the negativity that's been surrounding, and the, the, the constant. Bashing of the amphitheater, the process and everything else, I can get, I can tell you why donors haven't stepped forward.
But if you.
It would have worked.
Seventy dollars, match it. And the negativity comes on the city if we don't match it.
Oh, I, I completely understand that, but, you know, to, to somehow say that. Because the donors haven't materialized for the amphitheater, or they weren't there, and in Miami, there was a lawsuit, there is a whole list of things that. Uh, you know, a certain portion of this community made a very clear.
But you know, I'm, I'm going to step in on this right now, we can't continue to drive looking in the rearview mirror. The individual passions over this amphitheater, it is there, we're going to make it work to the best of our ability. But i- if we continue to have this thing as a, a personal thing, and the passion that it upsets people, we're never going to get anywhere. And so, I'm sorry, Councilmember Swanson, I know this is really important to you.
No, I, I, I. But we, we got to. Well, let me finish, it's important to me, because we keep referring to reasons why the amphitheater isn't. Doesn't either need or deserve the effort that the city should place into that. All I'm trying to point out is that there are, there are quickly, and I think intentionally overlooked reasons. That those things didn't happen, and we don't talk about those reasons, all we talk about is what's not happening.
That's what I'm saying, let's look through the windshield.
Yeah, well, I am.
And go forward, that's why.
I want to see that maybe a productive.
For the mayor who is going to tear that down, which, you know, I was accused of wanting to tear that down, which was headed to the castle. Who stepped up and said, let's go for a grant?
Right?
Me, right? I'm not taking credit, I'm just saying, I recognize that we've got to get that, I've said from day one. Uh, the city's probably willing to make the investment based upon the ability, the demand, I think is what I said. So, to your point, we won't get, know the demand if we don't make it minimally usable. And I think we've all said, right, that without sound, without lights. We're not going to move forward. So, I think that's a first step, but, but once again, I think the. Point Councilman Barker was trying to make here is that, look, if we've got citizens that are supportive. Uh, we're not, you know, we're not talking about millions of dollars in return, we're talking about seventy-five thousand bucks, so we can get that thing. What we've all agreed is basically function, if that be correct. But I, I, I'm just saying is that both, both sides of the trimming, and I, I wasn't involved in it, but. You know, both sides need to kind of look forward in the, and say, how are we going to make this thing, you know, work? I think we've decided it's going to, it's a very nice community gathering place. And I could be totally off-base, but to say that, you know, we're going to get permanent seating there, we're going to get concessions, we're going to get a fence, we're going to get restaurants. I guess if somebody steps up and says, here's five million bucks, go for it, it will happen, otherwise. You know, we've made it a good community gathering place for surrounding communities to do good big tasks. But I, I don't want to get attracted on that, because I know this creates sparks and.
Well, I, I think, I think part of the, the root discussion in all of that is. Aside from the amphitheater, what other service in parks and recreation? Have we demanded that the citizens come up with and pay for it and not come out of taxes? There is.
Pickleball courts, yeah.
Well, we have citizens that came to the city with money, and they ended up giving it to the.
Yeah, they said they're building ninety more now.
Right.
And they'll have more, so they'll be ready.
Right. But I, I agree, in, in the windshield, looking forward. I, the, the remaining question for me is, in, in, in the. Events coordinator discussion. We have the. I'm not an expert in parks. By any stretch of the imagination, right? And the person that we have hired and paid well, and, and is highly respected, who is the expert on parks. And knows more about than I think any one of us, is saying, this can't be done with a part-time. Now, I want to save the money, right? We, we're in a budget. But the expert, it's like the chief, you know, it's, the chief is saying, I need this for the police department, and we decide, no, you don't. Because we're the resident experts, well, I'm not the resident expert for law enforcement, for public works, for parks. And our parks director is telling us, I don't believe this can be done with a part-time person.
Make some more comment.
Oh, you can make a hundred comments.
And this, yeah, this is gonna be my firefighter math at least every year. For what we're offering for a full-time events coordinator to pay him, that's about what a starting police officer makes. That doesn't seem like you're gonna get. If you want a, a department level head, not department, but high-ranking department official to make it that way, a starting officer makes, you're not gonna get that person for that wages. So we have to bump that wage way up. At the end of it. And that's why I'm up the A P and just trying to get a twenty-five thousand dollar contract rate and see if it works.
A, a thought, and I really appreciate that, that's, you always have good insight. A, a thought that I'm having, Tiffany, I'd love to hear your opinion on this. You know, like we did with the police department on the twenty-third officer. Do we start with the contracted position and see how that's going through December? And, and make a commitment to revisit that and say, is this working or isn't it? Is, is, is what needs to be done, from your professional opinion, being done? Um, what else?
Is that if you went up of a, of a trial period, just the? I don't think so. And this is why, because the biggest event in the city is the week of charity days.
Right.
And the majority of that planning happens before January and now. So I'm almost finished. We've got three or four weeks. Now, we get over that hurdle, and there are the other events and activities that can be done, but I don't think having someone until January is going to show you that they're capable of charities.
I think another thing we need to consider, if I understood Tiffany correctly earlier, is before Nick left, it sounds like he put a lot of things on a golden platter for Tiffany as he left and said, here's everything. And you basically have to print it and put it on paper and say, here it is. And so that, that's a little worrisome, you know, everything is set for the next little while for Music Mondays, for example. But there will be this kind of sharp cliff at some point. But I, I, I kind of like the idea of try the part-time events coordinator. And, but we need to give Tiffany a good commitment that we will truly consider what is happening and say, is this working, is it not? And we, I have a hard time understanding exactly what the, is this working and what is not working will look like. But I think that we can come back to her later and hopefully make that hard decision again.
Well, and she can just pick up the slack and be quiet about it. That's, that, that does not work. That, that's, we can't burn out our, we lose Tiffany and then everything goes. Like, we can't burn her out. You know, so it's, we, we've got to make sure that you are really honest with us and say, this is working, it's like, oh, this is working better than I thought, or it sucks, and it's not working, and, you know. Before you're like, I quit, you're not even.
Are there any, are there any other people in Parks and Rec that are handling any of the event stuff for now, or is it mostly on yourself as the, the department?
It's on all of us. We have employees who are turning in a hundred and twenty-hour time cards. That's too much. In two, two weeks.
Two weeks.
We desperately need to pre-order. And it might just be, we're, we're running into the same thing with, with our business. It's our customers are having to accept a lower level of service because we can't staff the way we want to. And so it's like delivery times are gonna be longer, you know, events are gonna have to be cut, prices are going up. You know, it's, it's kind of maybe a new paradigm that has to be set also. It's unfortunate because, you know, there are so many things that we love about North Ogden events. But, you know, if we can't staff them, if we can't find people to, to do them, that might be the deciding factor more so than whether or not we want them. You know, they just might not be available. I mean, certainly they're available for a price, but it might be, you know, we can't have fifty-dollar pizzas, at least we don't want to. You know, it might be the same thing. It's like, we'd love to do this, but.
It's not just the pressure of events, right? We, we can't let people muddle along.
Yeah.
And that's where people are.
We can't let people change hours. You know, really long, we're not talking about cleaning, right?
No, we're talking about all of this, about running the events and activities that are.
Okay, so it's a combination.
It's a combination.
Oh, that's, uh.
And that's probably more specifically because charity days is really close, right? That, that you're getting a lot of that overtime.
A lot of that one is charity days, but we have one activity after another.
We, we have budget talk next week, right? To pass a final candidate or whatever we call it. Tiffany, I, I think it would be information helpful in where I am, I think where everybody else is. I'm gonna speak for everybody, and if I'm not, if I'm incorrect, just throw something at me. If I make a chocolate, no, no, chocolate, chocolate. Or cheese. Can you get us as quickly as possible in your spare time? That, that list of activities and what would have to go?
Makes it coffee tonight, if you like.
That would be wonderful. That, that would be great. And then we can, we're not just talking in.
Old South Dakota.
Yeah, yeah, we're not just talking in the, the Ethereum or whatever it is, you know, we're, we're not, we're, we're looking at actual, okay, we would have to lose that and lose that, or we would, you know, these are the, this is what's at risk if we do that.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Could we just entertain just a brief discussion? Because Tiffany is, is very organized and the events she puts on are.
Fabulous.
Yeah, pristine. I don't wanna further frustrate her by saying, well, we can have these activities, we're just going to downgrade how that, I mean, would we, just getting her some direction, was we prefer to have events that we're gonna do first class with the resources we have, or saying, well, I have to wait for the delivery time, because I think we're all experiencing that. And it's as frustrating as all, get out, you go to the restaurant, it takes you two and a half hours. Get out. Because if, if we say, uh, we're gonna go with a kind of a half-cocked event, then we better be willing to help the citizens with the expectation, because what happens then is if we don't, everything pours on the Parks and Recreation about, you probably get some of the same things I'm getting, you know. Even though this isn't necessarily a park situation, dog park, you know. I get things, uh, can't even find the dog's ball in there because the grass is so long, or you know, you start getting all these comments, and that just puts additional pressure, so.
That's kind of what I'm asking in this list with Tiffany, because I don't think Tiffany's capable of doing anything without doing stellar.
Perfect.
And so, by, really, and, and, and all the years I've been here, it, you know, you're, you're pretty phenomenal. And, and I think looking at that list, as Tiffany's saying, this would have to go, and this would have to go, I think we're gonna get a pretty honest.
That's my point.
We can't do it at this, these are with a part-timer, without the extra hours. These are the things that would have to go to be done.
You know, that's my question. Are we looking at, if it can be performed at the level of expectation elimination, are we willing to keep it on the list? And kind of, you know, that's.
What's your comment? Well, I have another comment that, that can feed into your discussion. So, the city receives from Ramp a dollar per person. They stopped filling a census for us to use for recreation arts museums and parks. And right now, that's eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, the majority of which we've used over the past couple of years to fund with sponsorships, almost all of the events, with the exception of charities. So, when you're looking for cost savings and cutting these events, when we cut the events that are funded by Ramp and sponsors, you don't save that funds, because it just goes to somewhere else in recreation arts museums and parks. And so, if we look, it's probably a couple of thousand dollars besides charity days that is not Ramp-funded in events like this.
Charity days could be Ramp-funded.
We could use all of those funds towards charity days.
Cause we've got, what, a fifty thousand dollar charity day's budget?
Yes. I would hate to see charity days dependent on that. The plan, um, as we are working on events was, when we got our events coordinator a couple of years ago, we said, we're gonna take a couple of years and we're gonna funnel this, these funds into this to initiate some activities. To initiate Fright Night and the North Pole and Music Mondays and some of these other things that we've been doing with the money that was set aside at five ramp, with the goal of this events coordinator learning to fundraise and build relationships with community partners to help lift those events off the ground, so that we could then take those funds and put them back into parks to, we've done, so other things we've done with those funds, like have you seen the, the rock signs, the monument signs in all the parks? We've used those kinds of funds for those things. We've used them in alternating years to help with playgrounds, or to help with other things that Ramp qualifies them for. Um, and that was where we were headed with those ramp funds, was to start some of these activities and events to get sponsors, which we have, to the tune of almost ten thousand dollars to match this eighteen thousand. And kind of get these going, get them up off the ground, hello COVID, um, so we'll keep going. But I worry that we're not considering that it won't be a twenty thousand dollar savings, because that money is still only like able to be used for those activities. And we could follow, you know, you could say all of this goes right into charity days. But is, is that the best use of that funds? And that's up to you. Is, do we take that money that is from Ramp and do we use it for charity days every year, one big event?
Is that a yearly contribution?
It is.
So the city gets approximately eighteen thousand dollars per year from the county for that, per person?
Twenty-seven thousand, pretty soon.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, hopefully re-up that.
That's one last comment, and this is my big concern. We lost Nick because he got paid how much more to his new job?
He's actually not in that new job yet. There were a couple of other considerations, but.
But. I don't know if we'd be able to fund. We advertised, we can't fail positions now. I don't know if we'd fund the events coordinator, what we're offering.
Would it hurt to try?
It wouldn't hurt to try, but we, but then we may lose, and, but we have somebody that wants to do the contract.
Can we offer a contract of that size to just someone we select? Does that have to go up to RFP?
And I don't know.
A lawyer question.
So are, technically, the council can enter into any contract in favor, you know, they don't have to follow the, the finance rules. Uh, if it's not gonna done that way, then anything that's for more than a year or more than twenty-five thousand has to go out to a formal notice RFP. Anything less than that between basically ten and twenty-five needs to get basically three vendors.
That was why we sent it this one.
But I'd be, I'd be open to say, let's open it up, let more people try to put in work. Instead of leaving it at one person we got. I, I just don't see a standing disposition. At the, for paying, unless we raise a wage, just like I. I think another component of this is back to Councilman Swanson's comment. If Tiffany doesn't believe that it can work, and it's not just Tiffany, it's just anybody, if they don't believe it's gonna work, it isn't gonna work. So I think that's an important aspect. If we enter into that contractual agreement, that's what the council decides. You know, is it gonna work if that's not what Tiffany wants to work? And I'm not just saying to Tiffany, that's just human nature, right? You don't believe it's gonna work generally, though.
Another thing to consider too, is like, there's, there's training involved of like trying to get somebody up to speed, to kind of understand how things are going, at least that out is, when you can, an employee that we get, I mean, there's, there's a learning curve that has to be. So it's like, if you've got a certain amount of time, you've got a certain amount of hours that you're contracting, and you're spending a lot of that just getting up to speed on my theory, that, that burns through a lot of hours. So, is it an hourly, the contracts is just?
Get your bottle, bottle, bottle's ready to throw up, because I was the one that kind of introduced this concept, so you can throw stuff at me now. The reason we honed in on this particular individual is because she's had experience. And she was involved last year. She kind of has a little bit of insight. I don't think she has a full understanding of what's at, don't get me wrong there. But your point is well taken. That's why we kind of honed in on this one individual and kept a couple of five thousand. And, and you know, I, I don't know if she'd be willing to do it for that, but that's kind of how we honed in. And at least inquired if she was interested. There's been no commitment made to this individual. It was an inquiry if she would be interested and honed, like I say, in on that, because she's had some experience raising funds, getting community involved, experience, raising funds, getting community involvement, and a little bit of exposure to charities.
Can I clarify? Are we asking for a contracted, a contractor to do the work of a full-time employee for twenty-five thousand dollars to be here? Is that what we're looking for?
I think we're trying to find out if it can be done, if it's in full-time. Uh, to Councilmember Exstrom's philosophy is, you don't know until you try.
Hey, you're calling back.
I don't, I don't know about it, if it's. It would seem like to me, but, uh, it's not gonna work, because I can read the body language. Tiffany doesn't.
Well, I, I think we, I, I think we have to be careful with that, Mayor, because we, we hired department heads to be professionals in their department, because we as councilman and mayor are not. You know, back when we, when we bought new rifles for the police department. You know, that came about because I was next to Officer Bursham at the time, as they were practicing clearing a house that was being torn down and the old, what were they, twenty or twenty-two inch barrels that were on those old?
They're twenty.
They were twenty-inch barrels. And, you know, they're banging into doorways, they're hitting the floor, and it, it, it was like, okay, we need new rifles. These are old, you know, they're, what were they, forty years old, those old rifles?
They were, they'd gone there in sixteen.
Yeah, they were, they were ancient. But Chief Horn at the time, but it was Chief Horn, right? Or was it you? No, it was you.
Uh, it was Chief Call, actually.
Chief Call, that's right, when we did the rifles. But it was like, the professional said, this doesn't work. And so we relied on the professional that we hired to, to tell us what's best for that department. I, I disagree that because Tiffany doesn't believe it will work, that she will sabotage it so that it doesn't work. I believe, for me, what I'm receiving from Tiffany is a, an informed professional opinion from somebody that we pay well to give us professional, informed decisions about Parks and Rec. Because none of us are Parks and Rec, none of us are Parks and Rec's professionals. I understand also where you're coming from, that if we don't try something. But if I'm looking at jumping out of an airplane and the professional says, I don't think that's gonna work, I'm probably not gonna jump. And it isn't because the professional wants to sabotage my jump, that it isn't gonna work because they don't want it to work, it's because they know in their professional opinion that it will work. And, and I have to, as, as a, as a council member, I have to think that whether it's David or the chief or Tiffany, Jamie in finance, any of our leaders, I have to trust their professionalism. And we throw all kinds of ideas at our department heads, you know, what about this, what about that, what about this? Could we do this? Could we eliminate that? Can we add this? And at some point, we have to accept what they're telling us. And I, I, I think that's what I'm asking for with the information that you can give us is, from your professional opinion, what isn't that we're going to lose? What are we gonna sacrifice in this professional's opinion? If we do the part-time versus the full-time?
So, can I ask a question?
Well, absolutely.
Are you advocating the full-time or?
Are you advocating the full-time or the part-time?
No, what I'm advocating for is that we do what we do with all of our departments.
No, I understand you. I'm just saying, if you were to look at this, would you say we need to get this person into the full-time or part-time?
I, I'm not saying either. What I'm saying is the person who knows best what that position requires is the person who's over that department and who's.
Well, here's the point I'm just trying to get to. We're, if, if we take this kind of timeline, everyone needs, I mean, are.
I, I don't think the others are gonna take this kind of time.
That might be true, but my point just is that any one of us could argue probably one side or the other. I mean, Jimmy, I look at this and I go, you know, lifeguard pay is pretty darn important too. Seasonal staff is important. We know that we're gonna have to come up with extra money for fuel costs. Senior Sandershead is probably, in my opinion, the one that could probably go depreciation and the water pool, we don't have any option really on that, because if we do, we're just kicking it down the road. So in my opinion, here's just my thought, I'm gonna throw it out, I'm gonna throw out my thought, let it run. If the mayor has confidence, I, the, the woman, the, male, female?
Once again, the Councilmember Swanson's point, I don't have that expertise. It was an attempt to help Tiffany take some of the burden off. Surely if it's gonna put more burden on, that's not what I'm suggesting and I wanna clarify. I'm not thinking on Tiffany, Tiffany's saying she would sabotage this. I'm just saying, back to your point, Councilmember Swanson, she knows a lot more about it than we do. If she doesn't believe a part-timer is gonna work, then why would we put that additional burden on her? But I would add one piece of color to your comment.
Sure.
We do have to rely on the expertise of the department heads. But as a council, the citizens are entrusting us to make sure that we expend funds the best possible way, so you know, I, I trust our department heads. I, I hope I've shown support of those. Just because I ask questions doesn't mean, you know, just an acquisitive score bay, okay? But we do have the responsibility uh, to make sure that we're funding things to the level of expectations. And we have that fiduciary responsibility to address these tough issues because it's not the department heads, heads that are on the block when it comes to increasing taxes and spending money. You were elected, as you've said many times. You as a council were elected to be prudent and take your fiduciary responsibility seriously. Because the other thing we're gonna be faced with, and I mentioned this to Councilmember Swanson, our surrounding cities have pretty much already made the decision, they are increasing taxes.
Frankly, I don't care.
I don't care.
I'm, I'm not worried about that.
But I'm saying, you may not care, but understand that the citizens are gonna come back and that's where you come and say, make the tough decision. Well, we will make that tough decision to do that. But at some point in time, we can't price people out of living in that, of, because.
Right, but we also subsidize other taxing entities because they're raising.
Exactly right.
And the reality is we have expectations.
What I would encourage here is most of us around this table that are on the council aren't representative of what most of our citizens are facing. Most of them don't live in seven hundred and fifty thousand to million dollar home.
I did meet her four years ago.
In the same house.
In the same house.
But you got a good deal.
In the same house.
But you got a good deal.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's that balance, it's that sweet spot we find.
Mayor, back to my point, do we have confidence in this individual that is volunteer?
I can't answer that. Not necessarily. Alls I could say is the individuals had some exposure, their intention was to lighten the burden of parks and rec. Give the council the option of what they would like to do. I, I can't answer that, but.
Okay, so can I make my recommendation? I, I think we have a need for an events coordinator. I would not recommend a full-time because somewhere amongst each of these points, we've got a, we've got a decrease three hundred and five thousand dollars. But I also believe that if we can really get the entity up and functioning well, then at least, at least, at least provide money to offset the costs of it. But let's put our money where our mouth is. I'd recommend, uh, we go with the, uh, part-time and then each of us run one of the events.
Question for you. Where do you get, we're headed to reduce by three hundred and five thousand?
Isn't that what we were talking about before?
No.
I think that's what.
That, that's the shortfall in the budget right now, but we haven't talked about what maintaining the, the tax rate.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, we haven't even gotten into the revenue side of it yet, so we're not necessarily in a, you know, we've gotta cut three hundred thousand dollars to make it happen.
Okay.
We're, we're, uh, we're not at that point yet.
Well, my still recommendation was, uh, to assist and then if it's gonna be, uh, if it's gonna be, if other, wasn't, for example, if their state council run an event, I wouldn't mind running an event. I'll do whatever you want me to.
Will you get that list too? We, we can add that and then we'll call this an indecision tonight, right? Everybody's, I think we've got everybody's recommendations.
And I guess I, I thought I, I misunderstood. I thought we were still trying to reduce another three hundred and five thousand to get us to a point where.
Well, I think my bad approach is, uh, back to my old days, expenses are paid out of revenue. And the first thing you have to look at are expenses before you go to revenue. Uh, not that you wouldn't be willing to increase them, but after you've done all you can to, to get expenses adjusted to the proper level, that's what you go to revenue. You immediately don't jump to revenue to solve the problem. That's just my personal opinion. If you need to, do it. But if there's another way, then fine, if there's not, then you gotta, you gotta go to the revenue line, but. Because, uh, once again, we only have seven, we have seven percent built in and the property tax increase, that's, that's what's there now. So it might be a combination of the two.
In an effort not to delay the report of that coordinator. If you talk to us around that part, then.
Um, I think it probably sits in the same situation as, um, where parks, seasonal employees. Um, and where we're sitting right now is we don't have enough employees. Usually we hire by the end of March. We're now midway into June, at least they don't have enough employees. We have picked up a few more employees for parks, but my instructions to Katie have been if they turn in an application, we hire them. Um, my concern on lifeguards specifically is that they are trained for life saving. And when we are taking everyone who walks and breathes, I think if you put yourselves in an additional risk, that's a.
I think it is a, given where unemployment is in the state, right, less than two percent. The available pool of, of potential employees out there is quite slim, virtually nonexistent. Is it a pay? Would more pay draw more people or, or do you think that it is? I mean, my gut feel is it's, it's as much, it's half or more than half of the other. It's, we have very few to pick from.
It's hard to get anyone to go do a forty-hour certification that costs a couple hundred dollars to get paid less than.
What are we saying?
Lifeguards or?
We need to just, I, I don't, pick up your bottles and throw them out. But we need to implement a fifteen dollar minimum wage in the city. I mean, realistically.
You can work eight times the taco time for eighteen dollars an hour to start.
If you go gravy, you get twenty.
Yep, seriously.
No.
Yeah, absolutely. If I'm a teenager.
But the problem is, is then you, you kind of elevate, you kind of push all salaries up, but why do we think we can hire somebody, what'd you say, ten dollars?
Ten dollars.
You know, if you've watched the news lately, everybody's having a hard time with lifeguards, some are even not opening the pools, some are reducing hours.
Salt Lake County's down over a hundred and fifty, right?
You know.
There are a lot of facilities that are not, um, teaching swim lessons because they can't find instructors. And it has pushed our registration through the roof, which is only putting a lot of pressure on.
John, how many employees do we have in the city that's making less than fifteen bucks an hour?
Seventeen? Yeah, I'll pull it up, but I, I think it's about fifteen, later full-time or, or permanent part, uh, permanent part-time.
Are we that special that we think we can hire people under the market?
I was, I came to this meeting thinking, because I, I recently heard that the lifeguards make ten dollars. I just, I found that out probably a month ago. Um, I was also aware that the seasonal staff for lawn mowing was in that, you know, eleven, fourteen dollar range. And I just learned tonight that somebody has to pay to get their certification to be able to be a lifeguard. Is that what I understood? So I wanna be a lifeguard. I pay and I do a training, then I get hired, right? That's also crazy talk. So.
We pay for their certification.
It seems like, it seems like fifteen might be, might be the starting, I mean, and if it's fifteen-ish employees that are in that range, I don't, I guess we'd have to see the numbers, but seems like a good starting point.
There are fifteen that are less than twenty.
How many are less than fifteen?
It would only be seasonals that would be less than fifteen at this point, unless you count the justice court judges.
And seasonal doesn't get, they don't get benefits. I mean. Why wouldn't we, we, we don't get paid fifteen an hour?
True.
Good point.
No benefits. And nobody wants the job.
Free golf.
Well, you do.
Yeah.
Mayor.
It's about it.
May I ask, but as we look at this, we did this a few years ago with lifeguard wages. Um, but as you consider where you mean expenditures, that you also consider on the other end, the pressure that is put on the employees at the aquatic center to break even and to not be subsidized, which we were, had the stars all aligned and we were successful last year, very successful. But the weather was perfect, coming out of COVID was perfect, not having other facilities was perfect. And so the system that we have set up for the facility to generate revenue works in the right set of conditions. Um, but as you increase expenses, you know, you, you raise five dollars an hour. Um, please remember that when we go to look at what was expended at the end of the year versus revenues.
Yep, um, last year was the perfect storm. Uh, this year.
No storms.
Perfect no storms.
We've, we've budgeted a shortfall this year of a hundred and eighty thousand, which I think forty thousand is a capital expenditure. But in this budget, our RDA funds is a hundred and forty thousand. What, what's changed? Would that be enough to cover this five dollars? Because that's what we budgeted is, I believe, uh, sub, uh, not subsidy, but a payment out of, uh, RDA funds of a hundred and eighty thousand. Is that correct?
So, uh, and here, of the discretionary funds, the controllable changes, so you have increases of twenty-one thousand in salaries, wages and benefits, forty thousand dollars capital for research, it seems like, five thousand dollars for the increase in chemicals because of the inflation on chlorine and a decrease in six thousand dollars because we've moved to electronic noticing advertising. So.
So how's it go from break even to a negative one forty, exclusive of the forty thousand capital expenditures? Because if that's the case, we all know that RDA is gonna end when Councilman Swanson next year.
We have to have programmed, the money programmed by the end of twenty-three and spent by the end of twenty-seven, John?
Um, soon thereafter. I mean, we basically have to turn in a report to the auditor saying this is what we do.
Like three or four years to actually expend the funds.
Yeah, because, yeah, I look at it with the additional borrowing to ten and a half million, that's gonna put our payment about seven and a quarter. If we really think that we are gonna be spending a hundred and forty ongoing. And the park rotation thing, but I think we need to get on, you know, we're committing ourselves to about a million bucks a year going forward. Um, because we won't be able to take the, uh, supplement out of RDA and come out of general fund. So I'm just wondering, Tiffany, how we got from break even last year exclusive now of the capital expenditure and, you know, we know the twenty thousand dollar increase in wages and the five thousand increase in chemicals, which surprises only five thousand. So if, just in my little mind, if we break even last year and we've incurred twenty-five thousand dollars more exclusive of cap, how'd we get to one forty negative?
That seems critical to me because the RDA was just paying the bond on the pool and then we take that off, so.
It's been.
Is it been subsidized in part of the operations as well? Well, last year's our revenue is now five hundred and eighty thousand and this year we're anticipating it to be four hundred and thirty.
Yeah, last year was the.
So last year.
Perfect storm.
Tiffany's done some things to increase revenue, though, I think. Do you feel comfortable reducing revenue to a hundred and fifty thousand at the silver?
Reducing revenue?
Last year I did four eighty, issue, we budgeted.
Five eighty, we got four hundred.
Five eighty and four thirty. You think revenue will go down that much?
I think it will probably be more significant than we think. June is not supposed to hit ninety-eighty-one until the very end of June.
Hundred on Saturday.
We've seen decreases in attendance because of it. I am not, Jamie is the professional when it comes to forecasting and I don't trust her recommendation.
Weather.
Right.
But if this becomes the norm, four, four thirty or four fifty becomes the norm, um, last year was just a, you know, you fluke.
So in twenty twenty during COVID, right, we did three forty. So it's a split.
So three forty to five eighty. So we're forecasting somewhere in between there.
Well, it seems like the, I mean, it just seems like an essential to increase the pay, so. I mean, we'll, we'll hopefully get to that later in this discussion, but, I mean, it seems like fifteen dollars is kind of a magical number, I, I don't know. But also it kind of is, it intrigues me though that we would pay someone that saves lives fifteen and we would also pay lawn mowers fifteen, so I, I don't know if there's a discussion there as well, so, but fifteen, sounds like a good start.
And the training, that's kind of hard to make them pay for the training.
Is it, is it possible for them to pay for their training if then once they've completed two months of employment, they get reimbursed? I mean, that's, that would seem extremely reasonable.
It'd probably be a number of hours because you can have employees besides family on the work.
Okay, well, yeah, that's true.
We looked at that, we, we did take this year because we couldn't find anybody, we offered a course. And we said, if you walk and breathe, we will hire you and we will train you.
And so people didn't have to pay in that one, okay?
And so.
They still don't.
I don't know that that's necessarily the part, the problem.
Okay. I, I think, uh, as Councilmember Swanson said and Councilmember Exstrom emphasized, uh, this is one of those things where customer service, but you're dealing with people's lives. I'm not sure, unless you pay them like huge amount of money. Because I think others have done this, they've increased the pay and they still can't get lifeguards or just, just not there. So what do you do? You don't wanna put people at risk, right?
Would it be for council, would it be informative if we can have Jamie um, run some numbers that if we, if we did a fifteen dollar an hour minimum, it mostly affects seasonal employees. Uh, but if we did that, what would be the budgetary impact?
That's a great.
I mean, we're three hundred and five short now, obviously we. I mean, we're three hundred and five short now, obviously we would be more short. But to what extent? I mean, does it take us to four hundred? Does it take us to three seventy? What does it do? Could you figure that out for us? In the next seven minutes?
Also, I'm thinking about the people.
Don't throw it.
The lifeguards that have been there already. If, if, if they all get increased to fifteen and a brand new person makes the exact same, they're gonna feel gypped. So we probably need to consider people that started last year or the year before that, fifteen, fifty, sixteen, something like that or else. I mean, can you imagine how you'd feel if? I don't know, that would bother me, you just, you make what he does. What's that?
You're typing.
That is actually a very good point.
Yeah, yeah. I'm feeling gypped here.
I'm feeling really gypped. I think we should go to a, you know.
Can we make it record?
We're still paying you five, but we don't pay him two.
All right. And I'm, I'm assuming, and still we're not here all night long, that the same conversation is about seasonal staff. Right? The fifteen minimum.
And then, by the way, I saw recently a local lawn care company that was advertising fifteen to twenty dollars pay.
Yeah.
So it, it, it's at least in the range.
Yeah.
All right, Mayor John, which of you would like to talk to us about the mid-year salary adjustments?
I would only add this color is that based upon what's happening now, we may have to take a look at that.
You're talking December?
Uh, whenever maybe. I mean, I think we have to be prepared to do it whenever that pressure continues to mount.
An off-cycle adjustment?
Yeah, just, uh, I, I know that the sewer district, there was no commitment made, but built into the budget with some extra money. In case that need to take place. I'm just saying the likelihood of it happening seems to be greater than not right now is what we know. I don't know if John has any dollars computation, I'm just saying that it seemed like to me we should have enough uh excess revenues over expenditures that we have the ability to do that necessarily. And then if that's the case, if the council feels that's something we need to plan for, then we would consider that in overall budget.
John, anything to add?
I, I think the mayor's right, but so recently I've started tracking as the, as it moves every six months to see which positions are moving most aggressively. Um, that was part of the data that, you know, the mayor and I relied on in for the police bumps. Um, as well as some of the bumps we've done in parks, um, for the, the staff who are, were at risk of leaving, right, with the, with the season starting. And, but to, to put a real number on it, we will know more in July when all the other entities put their new numbers in. To see where, where everybody moved to and how much the growth is. I would be surprised if we would plan on anything less than, if you really wanna go after that, I would probably plan on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which is a half of what we did, I've already committed to.
Councilman Swanson, I appreciate hearing from the chief. One of the concerns I have is I don't think retention and recruitment is gonna get any easier for police. How, you know, I think he's expressed his opinion maybe in the staff, but I'd like to counsel you here, you know. What's the probability of having to do something like that again to attract and retain?
Well, it's, uh, just like everything else, where there's people with park and rest or lifeguards. The market out there is so competitive right now. That if our, I don't wanna call them our competitors, but they are competitors right now for employees. Do something where the attraction, retention, retaining, where they start stealing our people, we have to be able to counter, counter that move. It's not happening on a twelve-month basis, it's happening all the time.
Your competitors budget started in January.
The SOS.
Yep. Say, my one starts in January, so you can get ready for January, so we may need to. So I just did a quick computation in my head, let's say that we had fifteen officers that have been with us that didn't leave. We paid them five grand, right? Haven't paid it yet, but we would pay five grand. There's seventy-five thousand bucks exclusive of benefits. And then we contracted how many officers, maybe five or six?
Yeah, lateral officer.
So that's another thirty thousand, and we paid that five thousand to come. So that's a hundred and five thousand without benefits. The question is, do we think we're not going to have to do that again? Cause if we think we're gonna have to, then that's another thing that I would be on that major salary year. At least some cushion.
I think it's gonna be a few years.
So in this budget, just to clarify, is there anything for mid-year salary adjustment?
No.
Is there anything for retention?
Yes.
How much is in there for the retention of police officers?
About seventy.
Next year. So we're only about maybe thirty-five thousand short. Cause if we retained everybody, that'd be twenty-two times five thousand, that's a hundred and ten, right? Those benefits, seventy plus benefits?
Yes.
So we might be forty or fifty thousand short potentially there, just to maintain.
Okay. Blake, I think you are a councilman, Senator.
Sorry.
For now. Thank you, the nail on the head with depreciation motor pool. We have to do that. Right? Okay. That's not. Is, is there any discussion on depreciation base?
Do we need to fund it fully?
But we're not doing the whole four fifty-five, right? We, we kind of decided as a council, but I miss that's a thing. All right. Yeah, we're down to two twenty-five now, right, Jamie?
So the two twenty-five is everything for the general fund going into the motor pool. The four forty-five was a discussion earlier in the year. That was a correction to be able to correct for twenty-two. But we decided not to move forward with that correction and just move forward with what we need and it's the two twenty-five. The difference was, um, using fund balance, which we're not doing that. That's what we did for, or we were going to do for twenty-two. But that's where it's, that's the discrepancy. So just appreciation moving forward is for the two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
This year.
If that makes sense.
Thoughts or comments?
And the depreciation is, is.
It's true, it's true to depreciation.
Yeah, okay, that's what I had, right?
Right, Jason? We're actually gonna sock it away.
Yes.
No plug numbers. Debits will equal credits.
Oh, I don't, I don't know that.
And make mayor hopefully. Sunday, government debits will equal credits. Um, fuel costs. Right, we're not five dollars a gallon and I know the city doesn't pay the, the state or, uh, the, the state taxes on it, so we, we have about a thirty-eight cents per gallon, thirty-two cents per gallon, I can't remember what the state's fuel tax is. So we're four seventy-ish. The calculations we had done earlier were up through five dollars a gallon, is that right?
Yeah.
Jamie, so we're rapidly approaching that with all indication that we're gonna surpass that. Some places in California are now seeing nine dollar a gallon, regular fuel. Nine dollars a gallon. Um, so included in our budget, the latest budget that you sent out, is there additional monies for additional fuel increases?
No.
Okay.
So it is the projection that we put out there, we did include numbers up to a five dollar amount, and that was based on fuel usage that we had through all of twenty-one and up to twenty-two at the time, I think we looked at this in February.
It was a dollar a gallon. What cost it us? So if it went to six bucks, would that be another thirty thousand?
Uh, that's a great question.
How many gallons? I thought the gallons used were, was higher than that.
I don't know, I was just asking, what, what it was the?
John, do you remember?
Uh, calling it the motor pool. Would it be on the detail sheet, Jamie, the fuel?
I don't know that I included there, I think it's just stuck along sheet and folder.
In the folder.
Just later twenty-three.
Fuel. Know what the sheet is called? So fuel units. Uh, like for police, for example, they have, uh, twenty thousand.
For twenty-one.
Uh, also the amount for twenty twenty-one was sixty-two grand at an average of three fifty a gallon, basically.
That was for police. Yeah, city as a whole.
Uh, it's PDF, so you'd have you'd have to trust my man. Uh, so, two five, eight-five. It's about thirty-eight thousand gallons.
Okay. Very, very close. So another, another dollar would cost us roughly forty grand, round, you're rounding to an easy number. And that is not in the current budget.
It is not.
An additional.
Spread among all of them.
Right.
Uh, John was telling me a while ago, cause I asked this question. Um, I think on the public work site, we have some of our own gas that some of our vehicles use. Um, is there any way to utilize that more and save by buying the gas bulk or is that just not really an option? I mean, I, it seems like it's kind of a half and half scenario where some vehicles use it and other city vehicles will just go to a regular pump. Is there, is, is that even anything to explore?
So we don't pay taxes either way, so the cost per gallon is not significantly different. Um, in fact, it might be a little more in the tanks because we pay to have it delivered. Whereas Maverick, which is the vendor we use, you know, they, it's, it's a smaller cost because their truck delivers a whole lot more.
That settles that, thanks.
You may have one other question, so I was looking at the budget again today. I think we're pretty lucky that our insurance costs didn't go up. Uh, higher than they did. And we're gonna be insured now, fourteen million dollars. I think we were lucky to get the small increase we got in insurance. Built in a cushion next year for twenty twenty-three?
No, and I don't have the number, the final number's back yet.
I think we're gonna be surprised what's the cost to ensure our buildings.
You're gonna be done by next, this year?
Probably not when things are going, but I'm just thinking on our existing buildings. Ensuring, you know, everybody's afraid of, that they're gonna get sued, everybody wants to sue the police. So I'm sure rates are ticking up. But I, I just anticipate we'll see a pretty good increase for those who are rebuilding right now. See that. Don't with the values, but I think it will see insurance cost increase.
So right now we are, as the budget, we're three hundred five thousand short. That does not include mid-year any cushion for mid-year increases. Does not include fuel costs exceeding five dollars a gallon. It does not include any insurance costs.
Ten thousand, fifteen dollar minimum wage.
For, yeah, I've got that written down here too. Doesn't include any of those things. So all of this then, Jamie, we get numbers tomorrow from the state?
Yes. I counted on it.
Um, you wanna explain to council what those numbers are on property taxes?
Do I wanna explain what they are?
Yeah, what's the number we're looking for?
Oh.
What is it? Not the actual so many dollars and cents. The number itself is, from the state would be the amount that they anticipated the, that the county certified rate that we would receive, correct?
So, okay, so here's what we know. I'm not quite sure what your question is, but here's what we know. Last year, our valuation for a city as a whole, we were at one point five billion. And as of right now, about three o'clock this afternoon, we're at two billion, so we increased.
Half a billion dollars, five hundred billion dollars.
A lot to pay.
Right.
Which is about a thirty-three percent increase, right?
Right.
Um, John, do you have the spreadsheet for the fiscal year?
So if we maintain the rate.
So if we maintain the rate, it would bring us to the two point four billion.
Thirty-three percent.
Right, so if, if we, what, what was our total property tax collection this, this last year?
One point eight.
Councilmember Swanson, I did the calculation, for each percent, we increase it, it's about eighteen thousand dollars.
What is our, uh, what is our current property tax rate, one one four two?
One one zero eight zero.
Point zero zero one one eight zero times five hundred thousand dollars? Five hundred thousand? Five hundred thousand or five hundred nine?
Five hundred nine.
Five hundred nine, excuse me. One to zero. It's, uh, it's five hundred ninety thousand. So if we maintain the rate, I mean, if I'm calculating this correctly, right? Then if we, if we maintain the rate and didn't even consider the additional dollars that growth will have brought in. Maintaining the rate would bring in an additional roughly six hundred thousand dollars in additional property taxes.
Councilman, I think we've already built seven percent in.
We have, yes.
So it'd be twenty-six percent overall.
Twenty-six percent, right. So we'd still be over half a million dollars that we brought in. And right now, we're looking at a three hundred and five shortfall. Without mid-year raises, without fuel costs, without insurance, without a possible fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage. So, and I, I, I I don't have a, a decision. Uh, but the thought between now and next Tuesday is what do we do about the property tax rate? Do we maintain? And take the additional half million dollars, knowing that we're you know, three fifths of that short, sixty percent of that already is, sixty percent of it will cover the current shortfall to balance the budget. And then we have those other four items uh that were, that we've discussed tonight that will increase expenses, expenditures. Do we take a lesser amount, but it's higher than what we were going to? You know, that's, that's from the revenue side of it. That's where you gotta be thinking, we've gotta be thinking between now and Tuesday, what are we going to do with the tax rate?
Councilman Swanson, could I ask one additional question? Based upon our ten and a half million, have you built in the additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payment?
So that would come out of the five hundred thousand that would be transferred over.
So what she's saying there is we set a threshold, which would bring up the discussion. This budget is five hundred thousand dollar amount to put into capital projects. Council said that's what they'd like to do to plan for the future, twenty percent for future parks, ten percent for building maintenance, you know, seventy percent as building a fund for unknown things. So what she's saying is if, if we don't account for that, then the transfer would go down to two hundred and Then the transfer would go down to two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, or the council could make that zero if they want. But that would take the transfer from the general fund to capital projects. Yeah, kind of the old way of living your life. Plan for what we know is gonna happen in progress. It would reduce the transfer amount. Otherwise, if you wanted to have the five hundred, that would increase the shortfall by.
So, Councilmember, you got the crystal ball? No, as I mentioned a minute ago, I'm not expect, I don't. I'd be surprised if anybody was ready to just chuck out, formulate, say. This is what we gotta do right at this moment, but that's the consideration, this is where we are with the budget. We'll get the information from Tiffany. So we have all this color that we have to mull between now and Tuesday. Well, we we have to, we're not making a final decision on the. Property tax rate until August when we do truth and taxation, I think it's pretty clear that we are going to do a trip, a truth and taxation. But it's it's a matter of. What is that rate going to be? Somewhere between, well, our options are, we can raise the rate. We can maintain the rate. We can take a rate lower than where we are now, but higher than what the county certified rate is. Or we can take the county certified rate, those are our options, and each one has a revenue amount tied to it. That will then, so. Any thoughts or questions? Before we.
This page, the second one. Tiffany, I have talked, woman, you park, we're okay putting it off for a year. He's actually come up with the schedule of our rotation. Every park every year, so. One park everywhere. And as we build in like child park that that'll take the place of a new park every year. Patriot Point or developed, and so by the time we get it all built out. The next sixteen years will have, you know, one year rotation or.
That's awesome.
So we can take, so we take that out.
Before we jump into the second page there, any other questions or comments about the first page?
So just to make sure, I just want to read, repeat it back, because I want to make sure I'm understanding. So we're at approximately a three hundred thousand dollar shortfall. So I'm 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 adding three oh five, I'm adding thirty eight thousand for gas. Um, I'm adding a hundred. Okay, how much do I have for gas approximately?
I'll say twenty five thousand.
Okay, good catch. Um, I'm adding more for the increased wages, we just don't know what that's gonna be yet, so that's to to come.
About one fifty, John's saying.
For increased wages, we have a guest. Oh, sorry, I'm talking about lifeguards and one more, so that's that's another one. And then I'm adding a hundred and twenty five for an officer. And then the events coordinator will, we, it could be one of a couple of options.
And about forty thousand potentially for the retention.
But that's already built now.
Just seventy.
That's about what, John, thirty or forty percent?
Yeah, for officers, it's closer to forty.
What's your math?
Plus insurance. That's, I mean. It's a, it's. It's not attorney math, it's JV math, and JV math says about six hundred and forty five thousand dollars, all of that stuff. So it's, you know, we're we're right on the maintaining the rate kind of range as it is. That's that's not including anything additional for events coordinators, should we decide?
I don't know that you would add the twenty third officer that, because that's contingent on.
Well, that's helpful, that, so then we're, so we're at a five twenty-ish. So we're about five hundred and twenty-ish, and then let's just say the events coordinator continued full time, then we're right at the six hundred-ish. So, but we'll talk, once we have firm numbers, we can feel better about any decisions.
Everybody some rough numbers to be thinking, pondering between now and Tuesday?
I I would just throw out, I know you'd be disappointed, Phil, if I didn't.
No, just keep throwing.
You know, a thirty percent increase in taxes in North Ogden. I computed the average, John, I just took the proper taxes we collected, and I know there's. There is commercial in there, but I just said million eight, which we collected last year, divided it by sixty eight hundred. Homes came up with about a hundred and seventy five dollars average. So if you look at it just from North Ogden, it would be about fifty some bucks on the average. But in some of our cases, it would be probably more. But I'm I'm thinking that the total tax bill will probably go up fifteen to twenty percent for people. That's a bit of a burden, now we gotta do what we gotta do, but I would just speak up from that standpoint and say. What is the hybrid here? Where do we find that sweet spot? Because. You know, coming from a business that's all by small businessman. Ladies, the first thing was, you know, we're willing to increase revenues. Once you've talked to us about, you've done everything you can to control the expense side. I'm not saying we haven't done that, but I'm just saying, if we're gonna go for that type of increase, we need to be prepared to. To address both sides of the ledger, because. There's a number of people in our community that probably aren't gonna be able to afford an overall fifteen percent increase in their tax bill. So I'd just say, let's let's try to keep both those sides of the equation in mind. Probably most of us sitting around the table can afford that, but. There's numerous people out there that it would be very difficult, but. You know, we've got to keep the city running and keep it a great place to live, right?
Any other thoughts or comments before we flip the page?
What does the senior center says?
I just added that. I just added that, it's pretty obvious, right? But I I just.
That's how my brain works.
I just learned about a need at the senior center board. It, so I guess they need some additional space. Part of their problem is that the community band. Rehearses there every Thursday night, apparently. And they're looking for some additional room or. Apparently, and Tiffany, you might know, is there someone that stores some drums in the Parks and Rec building? And they come and get it every week to go to rehearsal?
We do have equipment there.
Okay, so on average, someone comes each week, they pick up drums, and then they bring them back the next day to send them somewhere there. And first of all, because I haven't even talked to you about this yet, is that a problem or is that not a problem? Is it okay?
I mean, the storage, if they put it in a long term problem, because we don't have enough storage for what we have, but the fact that they have some door office.
Okay, apparently, the problem was being able to access. They can only access the drums during business hours, so it's a little. The way they said it is, it was a little challenging for this community band member to be able to do that. So I'm just throwing it out there that it might be possible that. Since we're doing the parking lot, at the same time, we build a shed into it that. I mean, if it's a lifetime type size shed, maybe ten thousand dollars additional to the three hundred. I'm just throwing it out there, I need to find out more information, but I just wanted to get everyone thinking that. Maybe there's a need for that, I don't know eventually. Is the amphitheater set up to store anything yet? It's not as is, right?
No, we built additional storage into the ceiling. But it's not, can I add just a?
Yes, because I might be missing something.
Well, for the senior center, and this is just a thought. It's always good to look at different ways to approach things. The seniors have a fundraiser, a bazaar that they hold every year, and I haven't talked to the board, I don't know what. What revenues they bring in with that. But they collect items all throughout the year for this two week garage. And many of those items are stored in the hallways and closets and things at the facility. So I would pitch to you the idea that if the numbers work out. That instead of building a shed for more storage, that in place of their activity, we clean out the facility. And then take the funds that we wouldn't have spent on a shed to store more stuff. And give that to the seniors so that they can use that in place of their storage. I feel like that would open up some space for us, for like podiums, headphones, sound systems, things that we use down there. As well as make a place for the band to put things down there. And it would get rid of some of the stuff, Brian can comment to fire down there.
Speaking of the senior center.
My turn to throw, go ahead there.
I I got thinking about this. You know, we we run the senior center, we we pay quite a bit of money for them. We're running a full line. Recreation department football, and then we charts a little bit there, but I'm thinking, you know, we we are incurring a lot of costs. And we love our neighbors, but, you know, should that be burdened on our our citizens? To deal with that, or do we collaboratively work with surrounding folks to? You know, maybe have a. This is just a thought, so that one would hurt, that's metal. You know, more of a, I know in the county, we talked about a regional growth plan, so each city kind of being stuck with their own, but. Do we have like a regional, can we have a regional recreation thing, or why are we stuck with? You know. Basically, most of the costs of the senior center, I mean, I don't want to be. Alienating people, but I'm thinking, do we need to step back and, you know, take a look at that? For instance, chief, and you know, I I know this is really important, but if we were spending. Three hundred hours helping other cities, maybe spending forty, is that fair? I'm not saying that's the case, but it may be fair, because we need that forty hours, or neither. But because we're the biggest city, are we taking on a lot of the the costs of surrounding cities?
There's a reason it's Northview Senior Center and not North Ogden Senior Center. The same reason that where the Northview.
But you collect from all three cities, yes, so why are we collecting? Have we asked?
We have.
And what's the answer then, John?
They, no, I mean, they give they give money to the Northview Senior Citizens Group. But not to us specifically, but you know, so they're two separate.
We've thought, we've we've approached Harrisville and Pleasant View in the past, in time that I've been on council. And it's a categorical no every time. And and I think, and this is just my take, right, this is just just my take on it. Because we're unwilling to say, if you're not gonna contribute, then you can't participate. You know, the football, soccer, whatever, you know, those other activities for you, if you don't pay the fee. To participate, it doesn't matter what city you live in, if you don't pay the fee, you don't get to participate. And it's been, you know, for those of you that have followed me on council, this has been one of those things, it's bugged me for the last eight years.
Conversely, they may say, okay, North Ogden, don't use our pickleball court, right? I don't want to get into a war, I'm just saying.
Is the senior center really like a park though? Because you can't use it without preserving. You can't just show up and, you know, the doors are open. Sunrise to sunset, the doors aren't just open all the time. Unless there's something scheduled, you can't use that building. Well, there is, but it's not like a pickleball court, that if it's sun up. And it's light enough to play, and there's nobody on the court, I'd go use it. Right? If it's sun up in the senior, and there's somebody who wants to do zumba, the issue we had in trying to hit zumba. Taught by seniors, for seniors in the senior center, we had an issue with that. So it isn't really like a park, because if there's a programmed activity, you aren't in that building, and it isn't open for you to use.
Just a thought, I'm not, I don't know what the answer is.
John, what what is our annual cost on maintenance to reestimate on that building? Sixty thousand a year that we're spending is North Ogden?
Plus the the half of the county salary.
And, yeah.
I'm the new senior center board member, but I would be interested to hear what Blake has to say with his experience. He just came from there.
I'm I'm about playing fair, we discussed this again and again and again, and we've never done anything wrong. And I'm glad at you worrying about the band this year.
Before we get off to senior center, I do have a question, who do the drums belong to that are being stored? Oh, they are the city's drums, okay.
They're part of a grand.
That answers my question then.
I have to be honest, I thought they were some random dudes.
In my mind, I was I was wondering, why can't he or she store those drums at her house? Now I understand why they are the city's drums. But Mayor, I think your point on the senior center is one that that we ought to. Councilman Severn, we ought to seriously come up with a plan this year.
And it seems like to me too, what's what's happened here, is baseball is probably easier to run than football, the investment in that. Equipment rises is substantially different, so, you know, Pleasant View has. You know, their own baseball recreation, but when it comes to the real heavy stuff, it seems like it's. You know, picking and choosing is kind of tough to to do the easy stuff and then stick us with the hard stuff.
I do have to say that we have a very good relationship with Harrisville and Pleasant View City Recreation. They do take our our flag football, we do, we actually get together, our departments meet. And we coordinate baseball throughout, you know, they take some of our teams, we take some of their teams, so probably not. Comparable in that way.
But the.
The way we change. Football is the big. Most expensive.
Sorry. Shall we visit here over the next several days and see if we can come up with a a formula?
You know, a tremor in our relationships, but we don't want to do that, but if we don't do something, then. Why would they just keep, I totally agree there.
I've talked with Mayor Collin, who used to be deputy chief about this, and he has said, all you have to do is ask.
We have.
He, during his term, he has never been asked.
Okay, that makes it pretty simple, doesn't it?
That would have been our last four years.
Now we just have to make sure that it's.
Yeah, and so that's what I. He's told me that, so let's ask.
Can I give you an assignment?
Technically, me, I guess.
No, I I, but with your experience there, having been the liaison, and you're the new liaison now. Can the two of you come up with a plan?
Present it to council, I was just gonna say, that's the biggest challenge, is just coming up with, okay, how many people are here from Harrisville? So I was just gonna say, that's the biggest challenge is just coming up with, okay, how many people are here from Harrisville?
I would go on the population.
And yeah, just basic population.
Pleasantville's ten thousand or twenty thousand. Harrisville's.
About sixty.
It's about sixty. Consistently the same amount of people using it, but I I can see.
I'll see if I can. Yeah. I don't think it's gonna be easy, by the way, but.
Oh, no, no, and there will, no, and it will create some angst and some fear among some people, but. I'm with Councilman Severn. It just seems like it's been an inequity for quite some time. We paid to have the building built, and we've paid to maintain it ever since. Uh, which you look at it, how many years has it been there? Twenty plus years, John?
Yeah, I think it was like the beginning of two thousand. And we and we did get a federal grant for a portion of the funds, and the county does fund so a lot of the activities, so. But yeah, there's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, twenty years at sixty-ish thousand a year. Plus our cost share on the building, you know, we're pushing three quarters of a million dollars. The North Ogden residents have provided for community use. Thank you.
I'll get back to you by seven AM tomorrow. Okay, actually, no, no, it'll take a while. There's no way.
Councilmember Swanson, could I just, uh, a couple of things to be mentioned about?
Yeah.
Um, as you know, we've got some increases in enterprise funds. Um, I'm concerned that we're eating up the balance of the solid waste fund too quickly, even though we don't need a lot there because of. Capital needs, but I'm thinking if we eat that up so quickly, at some point in time. You know, we're gonna have to make a dramatic increase. Um. I suggested that maybe, I think this year it's a sixty-three or sixty-eight thousand dollar decrease. Maybe we take that to thirty, because depreciation's about half of that amount. So considering maybe what we do there. Additionally, we we've got quite a uh, excess revenue over expenditures in the storm sewer. Um. Could we reduce the collection there to offset some of the increases in the others because? Uh, when we sell the the pond, I mean, the detention basin. Majority of that money, all that money will go into that fund. So I'm wondering if we we should try to balance that out a little bit. Um, do we really need to increase? Hundred forty-seven thousand dollars in the storm water? John, do we need to do that from your opinion? We've got a pretty good balance there now.
Uh, in the storm water, um, the biggest thing that we have is that we we do have a few big projects coming. So I'd like to look at that analysis.
We're anticipating picking up what, a million plus from this property? We have got the appraisal, but about a million and a half.
I would, I would say it might be north of two million in the, in, I mean, probably twelve months, maybe.
About two million.
Yeah, so we we, and I know that we've been talking with Dave's group about, is there a big project we need to be doing cuz? It's a storm waters, storm waters is an interesting beast.
But I'd at least like to look at that. I did send an article to Councilmember Swanson. Another city that's facing many of the issues we are.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not even. It's all like. Very similar. And and really communities across it, if they're not having the big tax increases this year, it'll be, they'll definitely have to do it next year. But we have become somewhat reliant on fees and charges. For instance. You know, we've had a pretty good number of years with building department. We're seeing it coming down. But, or, I was talking to Jamie about this. Since the nineteen twenty budget. Property taxes had gone up sixty-seven percent. Part of that was just. I'm moving the transportation utility fee into tax, but it was. But that worries me, that we're getting so dependent on things we don't have control over. I don't think we really have control over is property taxes. And, uh, so that's, that's kind of keeps me up, but.
For next week, can we have a, just a, uh, like an executive summary of? A reduction in charges for solid waste or, you know, an increase in solid waste and a reduction in the storm water? Is that what you were suggesting, Mayor?
I'll take a look at that, maybe to see if we need to. To have excess revenues over expenditures, I think it was a hundred forty-seven thousand, Jamie?
Yes.
There.
So where we're sitting at right now, overall for all the four funds, we're looking at it, right now it's at two forty. And that's a dollar in the water fund, eighty cents in the sewer fund, and sixty cents currently in the solid waste fund. Um, the mayor's suggestion of not taking such a big hit in the solid waste fund, we would probably need to in. Uh, increase that forty cents we're looking at, dollar in solid waste, so that would be, um, two eighty. Now, I'm going to throw in this comment. Um, staff's recommendation is to not decrease. Um, storm water fund, because we have kicked some things down the road as far as equipment needs and whatnot in that fund. Um, and also some other things for street sweeping, those types of needs, and I believe also, uh. Like the leaf truck, we have lots of problems with the leaf truck, and then. Some other things that we need to be doing over the old public works site in order to uh, secure. Um, the equipment over there, so just like closing, closing bay doors and whatnot, we have to add those expenses over there, so. I don't know if you have any other comments, but that's our, yeah, no, there there's, there's places for the funds to go that have been. And and we didn't include them in, and the tentative budget, um, it's just more discussions that's happened since.
I'd like to see an analysis of that cuz we've got two million dollars sitting in the fund. So my question would be, why haven't we taken care of those things with two million? We've got another two million coming in.
That's just in storm water. I think she's talking about solid base on some of them.
I think she's talking about.
Storm water. Well, so the closing of the base is kind of, yeah, all the funds. That that's probably what you're thinking, but I think a lot of the reason why it's held off is just because of the.
Because two dollars and fifty cents less around to that. But that'd be about equal to the same amount. Property taxes would be increasing per resident. About thirty bucks a year, right?
Right.
So really, to me, it's all, all tax, basically, call it fee, whatever, but all comes out of the same. Just a, just a thought, but I'd like to see the analysis for the use of the existing, uh, unbalance. Plus the, John's thinking the initial two million, you know, we've got. What about three or four hundred thousand committed to pay their coin?
Yeah, for the storm, it's it's right around three. Yeah, cuz the most, majority of it'll be covered by the grant, but there's a few items that won't be that are storm related.
About three or four. So I'd at least like to see that analysis to make a decision.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, you've got what you need to provide the information requested.
So, I was gonna, I was just gonna summarize the discussion on this page, cuz I think that's what you're doing, so you're getting ready to move to the next one.
Yes.
That what my understanding from this conversation is that the only thing that we'd really be adding to the new operational budget at this point. Not that these conversations are going away, is the fuel cost. Because all of the other stuff are like the twenty-third officer or something, they'll come back in November or. Something like that. And so I just wanna make sure that that's, that's clear, that there's no final decision on anything here, so the operational budget. Is just the additional fuel cost. Is that correct?
I would say we've agreed to lifeguard seasonal staff pay increases. Didn't we decide that we'd go in the middle of fifteen? I feel like we did, basically. That's what I understood.
Yes. So we just need the number.
Well, then I'll, I'll work with Tiffany on a recommendation, cuz I think there might be some problems if we do it. Right now, that it might, it might not actually attract anybody new, but maybe it's next season, not, cuz you know that we spam weird stuff. So I think we'll have a recommendation, but there are some, I know, for example, um, there's a recreational employee who. Is making less than eight dollars an hour. And has been very good and loyal, and I think maybe there's, so I think there's some that would be easy to, it'd be an easy transition now. Um, as opposed to. Seven seventy-five. So.
Wow.
And it's because they have a passion for what they do, would be my guess.
So will you, will you review your review again for me?
Yeah, so, so we we will, we'll come back with those numbers with a recommendation on the targeted stuff. Um. And.
Fuel costs added.
Fuel costs added for the operational budget for next week.
Right.
Um, but that'll be the the main change that'll be in the operational budget, and the other stuff will be decided between now and August in one meeting.
Right.
There's not a lot of meetings between now and then. There's three meetings.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's amazing how fast time goes when you're having fun. So, so yeah, no, I'll, we'll, so we'll come back with those numbers, despite that we won't have like the fifteen dollar number for next week because we. I think Jamie's gonna be out for a few days. So. She's going on vacation.
I need everything for my vacation.
Hey, page two.
And and for this one, council, I'm gonna, these were, these were items that showed up in the same emails as the rest of the items. Some of these you've already talked about, and I just, but I wanted to make sure that we included everything that was in those emails in case. Um. He just, anyways, so I don't. I guess Phil disappeared, so while he's gone, we could just like eat that. So the big question is, is there anything on this list? Obviously, next week there'll be a discussion about the bond. That's the follow-up from last week's meeting. But is there anything else that you want information or questions answered or want to talk about?
Same offer, yeah, yes.
I, yeah, I just wanted to understand, uh, when it does sell, where does it have to go, so we all know?
So specifically, we'll go back into the widening of the road from where we stopped just above Alberta to the light on thirty-one hundred. So it has to stay in the same project, same with the sale of all the homes that are on the west side of the road in that area. Um, most of the homes will all have to come down, but the land that's left over will be resold and go into the project. That's an agreement that we've worked out with, with, with Wake on, with Mayor Shaw.
What was the RAM grant question?
Um, it just was, I think it was about the timing, one of the RAM grants in comparison to all the other, so it's the stuff we hashed last week. I just didn't wanna leave it out cuz it was kind of mixed in all the emails. Just making sure that it, you know, we weren't missing something if someone wanted to touch on. Wow, I guess maybe Phil does need to be here. No one wants to talk.
Oh, just get me started, but no, the the concrete ones are, what's our current status on the federal grant? Do we have any sort of time?
So in the next four months, they will hold an environmental analysis public hearing. Where it'll be the final stage of what they call the pre-design phase. So it's kind of, there's three phases, pre-design, design, and then there's construction. So this will finish up basically the, is it a feasible project? Should this federal government support it? Um, and then after that, the rest, the other two phases would happen quite quickly. Um, as you know, concrete, I don't, we haven't talked to Pineview about the pond project. They had planned on lining the whole facility with concrete. That was underwater, meaning under the storm, the bottom of our storm pond. Um, uh, concrete is impossible to get. There are, right now, yeah. We're short on powder. Uh, Mayor, you said your contractor only got how many yards?
It's twenty yards twice a week. So, yeah, my house is just sitting there cuz we can't get concrete to pour the floors.
Yeah.
This concrete guy gets twenty yards twice a week.
Which, and that's a lot that Pineview would need, want more than twenty. So, and if, you know, and the sheriff's office went through this with their building, you know, to get their concrete floor in it there in Polbar. Took a long time and a lot of working people. Um, in fact, they even relied on the contractors they didn't hire to try and get mud delivered.
Well, the state's importing concrete outside the state to, I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
They can't even get it.
Yeah, so I I, and I, because of that, costs for at least that portion is are going to go up, cost for all of it to go up. So.
John, just a reminder is we have to pay out of pocket and submit reimbursement, so we'll be out of pocket, probably a million and a half. Then six total for both ends of the project.
Yeah, so the general fund, it'll be a million and six, and the storm water, it might be closer to three million. Um, I'll look at the numbers again because it's hard to start storm water, we've, we've. And three million might be the wrong number, it might.
But we get a bath.
Yeah, we just have to float it.
So then, two million, that seems. Yeah, so then storm water should be in good shape. I think probably it's just, you don't wanna let it go too quickly, just in case.
Just see the analysis.
Yeah, and and the other nice thing is with the way governmental accounting works, it it doesn't. Jamie might throw something at me. It doesn't matter as much what money floats that. I know that like. Because at the end of the year, the accounting lines up.
Wrong.
Yeah. So, yeah. Evidents have to be equal credits. We just use blind numbers.
So the the RAM, well, Phil stepped away, you were asking about the RAM grant, uh, bullet. And it was in your email, uh, that you wanted to talk about amphitheater RAM match, so.
We've answered that.
Kate was talking about, that's the one with the seventy-five from the residents.
At least try.
That's that.
I feel like we're pretty buttoned up on this side.
Yeah.
You can, I was just trying to throw everything out, it's been questions that, you know, lingering. Pick things off. Clean things up a little bit before we.
Was Longmont view on the, the, uh, initial budget in your, okay, so we, okay. So Longmont view was on our approved budget, and now it's coming on.
And then we talked about the three day property set.
Yeah, that was my question, and John answered it.
And the final precursor, Jamie is in the fall at some point, when she's not busy doing anything else. Is going to have a, start helping us get together a citywide, long-term capital project list like the one I think Ryan showed with the future parks. You know, or not future parks, but annual park rotation, so that all of the general fund and all the capital projects are showing up on. Two sheets, so the council can know, hey, what are we doing in ten years? Like, what do we think we're doing in ten years?
Well, that's the reason why we set that five hundred thousand dollar threshold, is so that we have funds to. Plan for the future instead of kind of having to deal with it on a year-to-year basis, but. Council has the ability to. Just that amount of whatever they wanna do, that's the budget. But it's, takes away from the long term. Going to try and take.
Mayor, I think that wraps this discussion.
Mayor, I think that wraps this discussion. Thank you very much. Anything else? I believe the special counsel, it's one of the archers who did that, that's what we paid the big bucks for. A dollar fifty? Oh, I had to wipe that out. Well, that's JD's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're going now based upon, so. Okay, let's go on to item number five. John, if you would watch, if we have any public comments or anyone there that would like to make a, a comment, now would be the appropriate time.
Okay, we do have one person watching.
Okay, I would like to ask the mayor a question. Remember last time I was here, I gave you that newspaper from New York, and I gave you an envelope with like a, a letter to the editor in there, and I said, after you read that, give it to Mr. Delfas.
He hasn't got it yet, I'm sorry.
No. Okay, the man who died that used to be the mayor, he was the mayor, and then I think Mayor Mearbrook was the mayor, and then this man was the mayor after it. This was in the North Ogden Magazine, lately, not late magazine, okay? And I can tell you, that man was the mayor, and when Mayor Mearbrook was here, uh, the people voted not to have the pool, and he put it in anyway. So Mayor Mearbrook got not voted for again, and this other man came. Now, what I'm gonna say next, you could tell me, those of you who've known this man, I understand that at one time, the man that died, I understand that at one time, he had something to do with being a big shot on the Weber County Sewer Board. And I also heard years ago that the federal government said, this needs to be fixed, and that needs to be fixed, and this and that, and this man didn't bother, and that's we have, that's why we have a separation of the North Ogden Sewer Free and the Weber County Sewer Free. Okay, I got another question for you. The senior center, is that run by North Ogden, or is that a federal facility?
I think North Ogden owns that building.
Okay.
And we get, we get some reimbursement for the salaries. But I think we pay all, I think we pay all the utilities and.
And you were talking, you were talking earlier about some kind of a shed or something? Well, I know several months ago, there was a, there was a, a, a building out there, I think on the east side of the police station, and it was removed. Wasn't that a city building, or did somebody buy it?
I think we decided that the shed was dilapidated, so it was removed, if I remember correctly.
The city repurposed one, another apartment, and then the, the older one was, was sold.
Okay, now I, I got one more thing that has nothing to do with North Ogden, but it affects North Ogden. I have a weather radio, and it comes from the National Weather Radio in Salt Lake, and it's a very good broadcast. They have weather radios, uh, weather, uh, places all over the country, and they're run by the federal government, which I don't care for, but in this case, they do something good once in a while. This morning, around nine o'clock, I called up the station, and I said, this is my, and after you, you dial the number, and then you press these different ones and say, to talk to a real, uh, you know, to talk to a weather person, press this. And this is the question I asked. Now, I know the weather radio people measure the water from October first till October first, in other words, from October first twenty twenty-one till October first twenty twenty-two. Now, I asked the man, now, this is a, this is not a recording, this is talking to a real person. I said, what was the amount of water from October twenty twenty till June twenty twenty-one? Versus the water from October twenty twenty-one until June twenty twenty-two? You know what he told me? Now, this is coming from the official guy, this isn't, this isn't a BS, okay? He said, there's two, uh, between two and two and a half inches more for this time period than there was last year. And I know, I know we have had a lot of rain in May, but the thing is, the reservoir, the primary reservoir is still way down. But we did get a couple inches more of rain for the time period than last year. I just think you might be interested in knowing that.
Thanks for that information. Much appreciated. Let me add, add to your first comment. Um, all the mayors who are served by the central Weber sewer district uh, have a board position on the sewer district's board. Uh, North Ogden is, the, the allocation has not been changed for years and years and years, so I don't think that had anything to do with Mayor Taylor.
No, this wasn't Mayor Taylor.
The one that died.
He died.
Yeah.
Who was the mayor before Mayor Mearbrook and after Mayor Mearbrook? I forget what his name.
The bitches are out there.
That's maybe what.
Yeah, Mayor Harret died, but, um, the allocation is based upon assessed value of population. We are trying to get that changed based upon usage, if we somehow can pull that off, but, uh, they do have, they disbanded for twenty-one million dollars, because they have to get in compliance with EPA and the, the growth. That's why you're seeing a proposed twenty percent increase in the property tax, because they had the bond to increase that. But thanks for the information on that.
Last week when I was here, you mentioned that with North Ogden City Tax, just do something or whatever. And I mentioned that at the front here later there, I said, the last time I looked at my tax bill, and believe me, even though I only see with one eye, I look at everything, okay? My tax for North Ogden City, the last time I looked at it was a hundred and sixty dollars, which is like sixty dollars more than one of us five years ago. And also, I just paid the flood insurance, five hundred and fifty dollars. And today, oh, no wait, that was a, that was the earthquake insurance, five hundred and fifty dollars. And today, I paid the flood insurance, which was four hundred and two dollars, which is like a hundred and fifty dollars less than what it was last year. And I deal with like all state of, of reputable company, not, not a fly-by-night company.
That's a pretty good deal, though, a hundred and sixty bucks for all the services you get out of the city.
Because the thing is, because I'm sixty-six years old and have, and own my own house. I think I told you this maybe on the telephone. Weaver County, and I think most of the places in Utah, have something that a lot of people don't know about, it's called a circuit breaker. If your income is below a certain amount of money, which mine is way below thirty-eight thousand, whatever, including my social security and my work, I get quite a good discount. So I don't know how many other seniors, this is for the whole household income. In my case, it's only me, one person. And I found it, when I turned sixty-six, now I'm seventy-one. When I turned sixty-six, I went right down to the county building with my ID and my front and back page of the federal income tax from the year before, and I said, I want a discount. But how many people that are eligible to get this don't know about it?
We should make them aware of that.
Because this, this was in, this was in the Salt Lake, uh, not the desert, and it was the other paper. And it was also a big story about it a month or two ago in the city week.
Thanks for the information.
Well, I gotta go home now, because, uh.
Okay, be safe on your way home.
You have a safe day.
Thanks for coming.
And you know what I'm gonna do, Mr. Van? I know when I call you, uh, uh, you told me that all the information gets transferred onto your computer, right?
Yeah, I can read your, your emails, yes.
So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna leave you the number of the weather radio, and, and, and you dial that, and you ask him what I just told you. I'm not telling you, I'm not telling you garbage.
I'll, I'll watch for it. Thank you.
Because I'll tell you, don't get offended anybody. I only joke around about sex stuff. Anything to do with security or safety or anything, I take very seriously. And I wanna ask the police, did you ever get the rest of your forty caliber bullets?
They came today?
Now, and according to, according to Lieutenant Hines, you ordered the bullets like almost a year ago. Now, I, I'm not gonna act pretty or anything, I don't have a pistol, but I know a forty caliber pistol is a little bit bigger than a nine millimeter.
Michael? I'm sorry, I'm about to cut you off, uh, five minutes later.
Okay.
But thank you for coming.
But I will come to get you that and try to find different information to give you.
Perfect.
Because for this police to take a year to get the bullets is, is pathetic.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, you have a safe day, everybody.
Thank you. See you later. John, anybody online?
Nope.
Somebody has to make a comment. Okay, we closed the public comments then. Any comments, are there some comments from council? Council members want some.
Thank you for the very robust conversation tonight. I love their sense, appreciate it, and I think it was good for us. Thank you very much.
I appreciate.
John and Jamie for putting together the slides and presenting us with all the budgetary information. Thank you very much. Very much appreciated.
I'm appreciative we can have those kind of conversations, personalizing things, and everybody has a chance to get their input. Ultimately, final decisions are up to the council. You guys have the opportunity. Uh, any other comments from council? I just have one.
Uh, John, if you've just mentioned a day, I know that they were working on some signs to put up in, uh, like at the top of.
The foothills, yeah.
Yeah, I came across yesterday, I was hiking up there, and somebody had started a fire right in the middle of the, right in the middle of the road that goes up toward, and I know that that sign isn't, isn't necessarily gonna stop something like that, but it is indicative that there are people up there that like right in the middle of the road.
Somebody blew up something right here.
And what was that?
Not her.
Yeah, seven twenty-five.
Brian, you were down there, what was it?
Called it a prank?
I think it was a dry ice bomb.
It was a dry ice.
It wasn't a dry ice. Do you know what it was? But it wasn't dry ice, so.
We could smell the powder.
Some kind of incendiary device.
It looks like it here at my place. When was this?
It was Saturday night.
Saturday night?
Yeah, I saw some videos, some rain videos and, and nest videos. Um, it was, it was a significant boom.
It was a bomb. They said the police showed up. We had all four officers, the fire department. I don't know who was on, stay on camera.
Record it.
Okay.
Investigation is pending.
It's not, it's over. We'll move on. Any other comments to council?
Always the last to them.
John?
I just have two things. One is, uh, from the fire chief, uh, currently, they're not recommending a modification of fireworks this year, but there may be a need for a special meeting if that changes in the next couple of weeks, um, just so you're aware. And then another one is, a resident has brought up deer again as a concern.
Thank you.
So, um, I know the mayor, I, I offended him by telling him the fence is yard, so, um, he's, he's quite frustrated. They, they've decimated his entire grapes and roses and.
So we do have, we're, we're getting quite a few deer in the city, there's no doubt about it. I don't know what we can do about it, but, uh, but you know, you have to put up a ten-foot fence to stop the deer from getting, so, I mean, you have to venture over. Probably, you know.
They can go jump it.
We're getting a lot of deer.
That you, that you.
Moving into their territory.
Where they just cleared everything, where that, near that bomb location. Um, that, they, they also used to live there. There was a herd that lived in those fruit trees, and I think that's, they've been displaced and they're looking for food.
A new place?
Yeah, we.
What, is there anything we can do, John? I mean, we've talked about DWR happened to, have to go through some hoops or?
That's the only way to do anything, is to use, comply with DWR, and they'll let us kill some if we go that route, or we can relocate some. And I think the cost per hunt, per animal is five hundred, and the cost to relocate is like two thousand. And it's, and it, and it requires our staff, like, to relocate, to go out and move and bait the traps, and then set, you bait them for weeks, and then you set them, so that the deer get used to going in and out. Um, and then the hunt is problematic, because you're now discharging firearms in corporate limits, and there's a lot of weird rules. Uh, Highland got, accomplished it by having it one group that was authorized to do archery, and they were very skilled individuals, because they done, I mean, basically, they were all certified. Basically, they wouldn't miss and end up with a deer running down the street and falling very far from where he was struck.
So the answer is, there's really not a piece of work that could be done.
Right, yes.
They were killed several years ago as a council.
Well, I, I, you know, one of the suggestions this fine gentleman made to me is that we license the deer, like we do dogs and and cats, and, and since they're owned by DWR, that we recharge them a fee. Uh, over on six hundred, just down the street, I think, up from here. So, um, anyway, I think you're licensing of animals, uh, we'll get back to you.
I know the drought is, is pushing on animals now.
Including rattlesnakes.
And bears.
Yeah.
And mountain lions.
Yeah.
Um, so the drought does have a lot to do, because this is an odd time of year, but it's not odd, there's always deer in our city, but more than probably like this now, it's got a lot to do with the drought.
Uh, we did tell the citizen, we, we bring it up, so we brought that up, and we have an answer. Anything else? Looking for.
I, I just wanted to invite you all to brand opening up, we're gonna put a playground. Other than just the final touches, all of the plants are in, and.
I think, thank you, the invite. I think we also have a business open Friday morning at seven o'clock. Yannos?
Is your, oh, the winner behind seven eleven?
Yeah.
On the opening?
Friday at seven, for those who want to come and support, that is also there, so, anything else? Okay, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, council member X.